Do the flag of the United States of America and do the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we are going to jump right into public comments 2.01. So if we're ready, we'll bring in the first speaker.
Hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry. Brian's got to read the guidelines.
Right. At each regular meeting, the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the board. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name. Tonight, we request that individual speakers limit their comments to three minutes. A staff person will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the three-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board, and if a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel and audio recorded as a matter of public record. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Gary. And our first speaker is Ally Aaronholz.
Ally, is that for the board members?
Yeah.
Is that folder for the board members?
Yeah.
You want to go ahead and give it to me and get that out of your way?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
All right. On my line, the attention teachers have taught me that advocate and stand up for what I believe in. Hi, I'm Ally Aaronholz, and I'm an eighth grader at Underkill Middle School. I want to be a vet when I grow up, and to accomplish that, I need to have a good education. However, with online learning, it can harden me and understand, focus, and most of all, learn. Over the last three weeks of school, I've seen and felt panic attacks, stress, crying, loneliness, and lots of distractions, and I miss my parents. After facing these challenges, I invited Olathe High School and middle school students to take a survey I created. One thousand seven hundred seventy-eight kids took their time to share their feelings on virtual school. So let's talk about the mental health of the eighty-five percent students who learn better in the classroom. Over the last three weeks, eighty-two percent felt stressed, sixty-one percent felt frustrated, and fifty-seven percent felt lonely. One student said, "I want to go back to school. I want to learn." Sitting for hours on end, alone in silence, leaking your nose-to-face body, it's depressing. A therapist, a clinical director of Vultor Recovery said, "I have sent more kids to residential treatment and to the hospital for mental health issues in the past two months, more than she has in the past three years." And what about the mom of a sixth grader? I received a text from her daughter. Mom, I don't want to go to school anymore because I'm having a really bad breakdown, and I feel like I can't get my life together, and everything is a mess. How would you feel if you were in our shoes, crying every day because you were stressed, because you couldn't learn no matter how hard you tried? Speaking of how we learn in a virtual environment, eighty-five percent of all students said that they were very good learners in person. However, only ten percent of students still think they're good learners online. One student said, "I finished for the 4.2 GPA last year, and this year, I already have two years. It's so hard for me to learn and focus virtually, and I would do anything to go back to person." Did you know that eighty percent kids said that they focused better in the classroom while only six percent focused better virtually? Now, let's talk about the teachers. The teachers are working tirelessly to give us the best education they can, and they're giving it all they bought. However, not only are the kids stressed, but so are teachers. Let them have the platform in which they prefer to teach as well. And from a senior, "My grades matter to give scholarship in college. If I don't maintain my GPA, I'll be stuck with a massive debt since I am paying for my college." And for the grading criteria, KDAHE shows that we are currently six point five percent, which would allow us to return to school. Please consider using other grading criteria other than just Johnson County. I am Lauren, speaking for fifteen thousand nine hundred seventy-one Olathe middle schoolers and high schoolers. Our mental health is just as important. Please read the sixty-seven pages of poems and data from over seventeen hundred kids. This is students who took their time to share how this has affected them mentally. You all want the best for the students. Let any person students attend school. Let all my members stay home. It's the best thing you can do in these hard times. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ally. Our next speaker is, I believe, Doug Billings.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Board of Education, Mr. Superintendent, Administrators, Teachers, and Students. My name is Doug Billings. I live in the First District. I'm going to speak fast and with some passion. I'll try not to sound like an auctioneer. Two sons I've had are open and graduated from this district.
Mr. Billings, I'm sorry. Where's your mask?
I have medical.
I'm sorry. You'll have to have a mask on in order to address the board. It's required in this room.
Yeah, I didn't notice that. I'm sorry. You need a mask.
Can you restart the clock?
Can we pause it?
I think it's against law to force people with medical conditions to wear a mask.
You need a mask.
Mr. Billings, please.
So Doug Billings, First District. My older son, Grant, graduated from Olathe South in 2012. Michael here is a senior at Olathe South currently. I have administered and helped to administer over thirty hospitals from New York to Ohio to Tennessee, Missouri, and Kansas. I also host a podcast show called The Right Side of Doug Billings where I try to put truth to what media says about certain issues, COVID-19 being one of them. And I'm here to tell you that what the media has told us to believe about COVID is not true. Statistically speaking, data from CDC says that the COVID infection fatality ratio for people from birth to age nineteen is point zero 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 three percent. From birth to age nineteen, the infection to death ratio, we don't even get to one-half of one percent until we get to age seventy-three. The survival rate for people that have COVID-19 from birth to age nineteen is a statistical one-hundred percent survival rate, ninety-nine point nine nine seven percent. There has been, through the media, much fear propagated from the term and by the term new cases of COVID. We're supposed to think that new cases of COVID means more deaths of COVID, and that's simply a lie, and it's not true. New cases of COVID, and we have to begin to say this out loud and with a certain amount of passion and truth, new cases of COVID-19 based on the data that you just heard from the CDC, is not a bad thing. Heard immunity needs new cases. And the statistical death rates of people that are not medically fragile is so low that it's almost, it gets wildly intellectually immature to consider that we might have to close schools to protect kids from the virus that's so deadly that the only way that you know you have it is to be tested for it. Now, these kids are suffering more emotionally, socially, psychologically, academically than the virus will ever touch. And I would wager and say to you, good people of the Board of Education, I know that you have these kids' best interests at heart, and I certainly know their teachers do. Ms. Norris in Olathe South, Michael's teacher, knocking it out of the park every day. But contractually, the IEP that he has signed, and we've signed for the district, can't be met on Zoom. I would also challenge you to think that anybody who wants to damage kids emotionally, psychologically, academically, and socially, when there's no need to, any union, any organization, any group doesn't have the best interests of these children at heart. We are beyond miserable. We are infuriated. Open up these schools full-time for all students every day. With respect, you are our elected officials. I respectfully ask that you become servant leaders. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doug. Our next speaker is Karen Rawlings.
Hello, I'm Karen Rawlings. We have heard from many of you speak about safety and balance as it relates to our district's school attendance, and most of us agree with this sentiment. Let me share with you some objective facts that support this cause. According to the JUCO COVID dashboard just this week, those aged zero to nineteen have had zero deaths documented since the beginning of COVID record keeping. Of the Johnson County population aged twenty-one to forty-nine, who represent the vast majority of our certified staff, point zero zero one percent have died with COVID, or seven out of over six hundred thousand people. Inpatient hospitalizations have also been very low, including only point zero two percent of the Johnson County population ages zero to forty-nine. Let's contrast that dashboard information with another objective figure. For example, those driving to and from school in Johnson County are almost three times as likely to die in a car accident than they are from COVID. Yet, we allow our students and staff to drive to and from school daily. In fact, one of the hybrid models that are being considered would have high schoolers doing this multiple times per day. The vast majority of our school population is simply not dying from COVID or getting gravely ill from it. The district and board have improperly carried out processes at schools based on very selective data. This includes the Kansas and Johnson County Health Department's gating criteria of positivity in cases per one hundred thousand. Multiple schools near Johnson County and throughout the state have been operating full-time instruction and have had very few cases of COVID, more importantly, with no in-person hospitalizations or deaths. Additionally, transmission has been contained, primarily thanks to the contact tracing measures in place and the testing to the community. In the quest for safety and balance, you have the power tonight to adopt new objective criteria or to continue to ignore the facts that I've just illustrated. We cannot wait for COVID to go away or to change for our students to get back in the classroom. Remote learning and the hybrid model have proven to be ineffective. Our students' academic achievements are being devastated by these models, and you've taken away our students' stability, security, structure, and social emotional supports. This has been psychologically damaging. And doing all of this to satisfy the few who are fearful and those who are using students for political gain is destructive in my opinion. The district has set goals such as high academic expectations for all students. We agree with this, and we expect you to fulfill this. This can only truly be accomplished within person attendance. Going forward, we must learn to adapt to the ever-changing COVID environment we are in, utilizing the practices we have in place. In the name of safety and balance, we must get all grade levels back in school full-time. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Next up is Alicia Morris.
Hello, my name is Alicia Morris, and I am a high school teacher in the district. Many teachers I know have been afraid to speak out publicly out of fear for their jobs and other retribution. My name has already been out there pretty publicly over the last two months, so I feel as if it is my duty to speak on behalf of the citizens. We all want kids in school. We all want students and staff to stay healthy. However, those two things are not compatible right now. On August 6, I sent you all an email and a spreadsheet attempting to track COVID-19 cases in schools. My spreadsheet logged seventy-four cases in twenty-one districts, which I thought was shuffingly large number at the time. We now have over thirty-six thousand school-related cases in over two thousand districts nationwide. Please note, this is nine thousand more cases than when I emailed you all on Monday. This means that we will absolutely experience cases in our buildings, and we cannot guarantee that none of those cases will be fatal. Are you okay with that? I urge you to please consider what teachers and staff are going through. You've been asking us to pivot so much that we're all dizzy from spinning in circles. Just when secondary teachers feel like we've got a handle on virtual learning, we hear rumblings of the switch to hybrid despite the gating criteria that this board voted to uphold. Teachers were never asked for input on virtual versus hybrid learning, and teachers were never asked, "How's virtual going?" Here's how it's going: surprisingly well. We've got a structure and a flow going with online classes, and the amount of creativity, critical thinking, and problem solving I'm seeing as a result of the virtual divide is absolutely astonishing. It's amazing how resilient these kids are. So please, provide us with the consistency we need in order to do our jobs well. The parents have clearly stated that they want a quality education for their children, and that is very hard to do when we have to reinvent the wheel with every district level change. The connections many teachers have formed with their students over a computer screen will be damaged by the forced distancing that hybrid unfortunately requires, not to mention it will cut student FaceTime in half. I know students want to come back. I want them to come back. We all want them to come back, but they can't right now. So we need to act on that knowledge and make a safest choice. And I say to all the parents who are watching this right now, just like you are fighting to be the best parent for your child, we are fighting to be the best teacher we can be for your kids. We are bending over backwards and jumping through hoops to engage them and get them excited about learning in these trying times. Please allow us to use professional discretion on how to give the students the most consistent, quality education possible. We need to work together to ensure the safety and well-being of our next generation. For these reasons, I support continuing secondary virtual education as the current Johnson County gating criteria suggests. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alicia. Next up is Lexi Docstatter.
Good evening. Mr. Allison, Mr. Beveridge, fellow members of the board. My name is Lexi Docstatter. I'm a junior at Olathe North. I wake up at seven forty-two. I brush my teeth. I change my clothes. Then I prepare for my exhausting review. This is when I am forced to call school. Upon my ten-step journey, I arrive at my desk. I retrieve my computer. I log into StudentView. I report to my first class. This is when I am forced to start, forced to call school. Thoughts start reaching my mind. Will StudentView work today? Will Zoom work today? Will Google Classroom work today? Thoughts? This is when I am forced to call school. For the next seven hours, I sit at that desk. I stare at that computer screen, eyes burning, head pounding, stress escalating. This is when I am forced to call school. I can assure you that I am not the only student who faces this recurring horrifying nightmare every day. Participating in this routine, day after day, week after week, month after month, would be a catastrophic blow to your students' education. We know students who willingly want to participate in in-person school deserve better. For students like me, online school just isn't effective. For instance, in AP Chemistry, online school prohibits lab work, which is the foundation of a chemistry class. It is common knowledge that high school encompasses the most important academic years of our lives. How are we supposed to learn when it is nearly impossible for teachers to teach via online school? Overall, students' grades are falling. Before you know it, GPAs will start to crash. The cost of continuing online school not only will be detrimental to students' education, but it could also result in thousands of dollars lost in what could be potential scholarships. So when you go to vote tonight, please don't think about gating numbers or criteria. I am not just another number. We, the students, are not just another number. We are faces. We are brains. Your students, which is what person matter. Your job is to successfully prepare students for their futures. Please do that by giving me and thousands of other students the opportunity to go to school in person. Choose me. Choose us. Choose our rights to learn. Steer clear of your fears. Prepare us for our future. After all, that is your mission, and that is why you guys are here. Thank you.
Thank you, Lexi. Next up is Blair Smith.
Good evening. I'm a seventh grade student at Sizem Trail Middle School. I'm here today to tell you how I feel about remote learning and going back to school. Remote learning has brought many difficulties and stress to learning. For example, when I was in ELA, we had to do an annotating assignment. I was getting very stressed, crying, and wasn't able to focus. It was so bad, my mom had me leave the Zoom early, which then led to the assignment for homework. This shows the difficulties of not being able to get direct help from a teacher. Another challenge is that other students seem to have behavior issues with little to no consequence. Students are on their phones, someone in class that wasn't supposed to be there, pretending to be another student in class. Furthermore, students with IEPs or special needs are having to get extra help from their parents, which then causes their parents not being able to do their own job and get the hours in that they need for work. Students aren't being able to have a social life with their peers. I sit at home for lunch by myself. I have no peer during passing period at times. It makes me sad. Why is that high school gets to be able to do sports and then middle school doesn't get to do that, and how elementary school gets to go back full-time? Why is middle school being left out? Mental health of students has increased by forty-one percent. High school and elementary has some outlet, and when middle school doesn't have that. I want to go back to school full-time. I do not want a hybrid option that mirrored elementary school, that is not getting taught by teachers, and that will cause us to get behind even more than we already are. Something else is that us students are having to use many different sites that will be able to lose our homework, which then leads us to getting bad grades. How do you think we feel having to learn like this? Because for me, we aren't being able to do our work, which then leads us to not feeling good. Thank you for letting me come here and speak about how I feel.
Thank you, Blair. Next up is Kelly Niffen.
Hello, my name is Kelly Niffen. I am the parent of two students currently in Olathe School District, one in elementary school and one in high school. But I'm also the proud parent of a 2020 graduate from Olathe Northwest who finished the year even though it was weird. As a parent, I chose to have my children fully remote. It was obvious to me that some people didn't care what was best for others, so I chose to keep my kids home. And when I saw what was happening with the elementary schools and the hybrid method, I was so glad I did. The teachers having to teach kids at home while other kids were at school, it was a mess. The fully remote option has given my son more consistency and a regular attentive teacher, not one who was struggling to do multiple jobs at one time. In addition to being a parent, I'm also a sub for the school district. As a sub, I have been impressed with the content and community the teachers are building with the remote teaching. Studies show that middle and high school students spread and get the virus as easily as adults. So bringing kids back to windowless classrooms and buildings where they meet with hundreds of people a day is risky at best, especially since proper ventilation and sanitation have not been addressed, not to mention, who are you going to get to cover these classrooms when the teachers get sick if subs aren't willing to take that risk? We don't get paid time off. We do not get paid sick leave. And if I get sick or quarantined from subbing, I can't do my other jobs. I can't make any money at all. And I know it's going to be a very hard decision to go back into a classroom when we're still in such a risky zone. I know the idea of bringing back kids in a hybrid fashion is being discussed, but there are two reasons that you should not even consider it. It's horrible. It's the worst case scenario for teachers to have to teach kids at home and kids at school at the same time. It also is risky, considering that until an hour ago, we are in the red zone until they change the rules apparently. There's no question we all want to return to normal. Normal is not an option right now. We're in the middle of a pandemic. We wish it was over, but it's not. So endangering more lives is not something you should even be considering. This is a great opportunity to listen to the scientists, teach kids the importance of educated people and science, keep the kids home, wait until it's safe to bring everyone back fully before you even consider bringing anyone back. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kelly. Next up is Jeanette Bonjour.
Good evening, and thank you for your time. My name is Jeanette Bonjour, and I teach English at Montclair. I'm here tonight to urge you to vote to continue distance learning for both middle and high school students until it is safe for all involved to change course. First, when the board voted to start all secondary students in our current distance model, you made a promise to all involved that you would follow the gating criteria of the Johnson County Health Department. Unlike other districts in our area, you have so far kept that promise, and I thank you. I can only hope you have no intention of breaking your word now when our fourteen-day moving average as of 5:10 this evening is still at eleven point nine percent and trending upwards, and despite the new modifications to the criteria that came out at that time. If the health dangers associated with bringing students back into school buildings do not alarm you, then perhaps I can appeal to your concerns for the educational efficacy of doing so at this particular point in the school year. While the remote model is not perfect, it is working for the majority of my students. Of course, I want to teach all of my students in person. I assure you, I did not become a teacher twenty-seven years ago so that I could teach one day, hopefully, twenty-five rectangles on a screen. Is it challenging? Yes. Am I finding myself constantly searching for ways to energize and invigorate my online instruction and assignments? Of course. But it is working. To force us, teachers, staff, and students to pivot yet again, especially in the middle of a semester, will cost us precious time as we acclimate to a new schedule. Additionally, by creating forty-five-minute classes, even with the expectation that students will work independently on a lesson for an additional forty-five minutes at home, you would be hampering those of us who rely on class discussion and small group activities in our classes. As a result, we would lose even more content than has already been sacrificed this semester. And finally, teachers, custodians, bus drivers, secretaries, none of the hundreds of adults who work in and for the Olathe Public Schools are frontline workers like paramedics and other medical professionals. We should not have to endanger our lives, the lives of our own families, in order to do our jobs. I have an elderly mother, a husband over sixty, and an eighteen-year-old son with moderate asthma. This virus could be deadly for any or all of them. And I do not believe that I could live with myself if I was the one who brought it into our... We teachers can do our jobs. We are doing our jobs in the current distance model, and we should be allowed to continue to do so. I urge you to stand strong in the face of those who are pressuring you, and I know they are pressuring you, to return to face-to-face instruction for secondary students. It is not safe, and it is not educationally in the best interest of our kids. Keep the promise you made. Keep us in the distance learning model until it's safe to return to classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Nicole Robles.
Hello, my name is Nicole Robles, and I have been a teacher for the past eleven years at Central Trail Middle School. I'm deeply concerned about the proposal to shift our teaching and learning model yet again by adopting a hybrid instructional model at the middle school and high school level. Many have claimed to be concerned about the mental health of our students, but you can't truly be concerned if you're going to allow middle and high schoolers to be contactless for two or three days a week. For families with caregivers working outside the home, this leaves our already vulnerable students even more isolated. Even if it is virtually, my community of learners is together every day, every day for at least fifty minutes. I know they are safe before going off to the next class. You can't truly be an advocate for the mental health of students and be okay with the hybrid model. Speaking of mental health, many of our teachers are near breaking points. There has been little to no consistency from this board and from district administration. We're told one thing, turned around, and found the opposite to be true. Can we use breakout rooms? Was I approved or not as a remote learning teacher? Is this the final schedule? Is Google Classroom acceptable? What grading criteria are we actually using? No consistency. We've pivoted so many times that we're dizzy. The school district is losing teachers. Incredible teachers who once inspired are now whopping zombies, and it's too much. In my final remarks, I'd like to address a Facebook post made by a member of this board. In it, the board member likened educators to servers at Jose Pepper's. Look, I'm not dropping you a plate of nachos. I'm kneeling by your child to help them read a word. I'm navigating a crowded hallway. I'm cleaning vomit from carpet. We are far more immersed in the static environment than a school. And by the way, there are plenty of companies and groups of employees that are staying remote until it's absolutely safe. John Deere, Yellow Roadway, these companies are in our county, and they've pledged to keep their employees remote until a remedy is available. In this same post, which was apparently a response to an email from a teacher I also emailed but did not receive a response, the board member spoke of the death rate from COVID, mentioning that children, quote, "tend to be younger," and so they... and so they don't die at higher rates from it. They don't die at higher rates from it. But people do die from it, and if not a child, then perhaps an adult. So I'd invite you, any of you, come into my classroom, take a look at my roster, tell me which ones, what colleagues. Yes, remote learning is hard, funerals are harder. I'm urging you, please stay consistent. Please adhere to the gating criteria you've already adopted. Consider the mental and physical health ramifications of the adoption of the hybrid model at the middle school level. Hybrid will simply not work for middle school students and staff. Finally, thank you for trusting us with your most prized possessions, your children.
Thank you, Nicole. Next up is Jane Bush.
Good evening, school board members, district administrators, and guests. My name is Jane Bush. I teach college chemistry and honors chemistry at Olathe North. And I have been teaching in Olathe for thirty-one years. In that time, I have always felt like the school board had my back in that and valued me as an employee. I am not feeling very valued by the district this year. I know that you, the school board, are experiencing attacks from all sides, and for that I apologize. You've done great work. I know that the kids want to come back. I want nothing more than to have my kids in the room with me so that I can teach them. However, based on the gating criteria you adopted in August, it is not safe. My understanding is that tonight you will consider a variety of gating criteria for dictating whether we should be in-person-to-person classes. My question is why? Are you looking for loopholes? When the Olathe North Eagles football team has fourth down and inches to go to get a first down and they don't make the first down, we don't go out and shorten the chains or lengthen the ball. When we, when Buckner missed the field goal by inches at the end of the first half, Andy Reid didn't go out and have them move the goalposts. The rules are already set. You committed in August to the criteria put forth by the Johnson County Health Department. Any attempt to change that at this point is simply looking for loopholes. I commend you for your decisions to support remote learning when school started. I implore you to hold fast to that criteria. From my standpoint in the classroom, remote learning seems to be going very well. The kids have gotten into the groove. I am actually having fun as it is forcing me to investigate new ways of doing things. You actually can teach an old dog new tricks. If we change the learning delivery, we will have a new learning curve to adjust to and basically be starting all over. I realize that all the school districts in the area are starting to choose in-person learning. I realize that many people survive this virus, especially young people with no long-term side effects. But that is not always the case. By choosing face-to-face learning, you're putting staff and students at risk and extended families at risk. I leave with an analogy. In my entire life, I personally know one person who has been struck by lightning. Yet if I were out on the soccer field and lightning was detected, I would leave the field, even though the chances of me getting struck are not huge. By saying the risk of the virus is small, does that mean you would shrug off the risk of that lightning and stay on that field play? And more importantly, would you let your children? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Newland Waka.
Hi. Is one of these is on? Computer? Uh, my name is Newland Waka. I teach math at SOAR, which is one of Olathe's alternative education programs. And I feel really privileged to work in this district, having come from elsewhere. Um, I've been here for about twelve years and all that the whole time. And you guys are probably aware, right now we are neck deep in, uh, remote teaching. And I personally, uh, enjoy it. I'd like the, the opportunity to explore other models, uh, for education. Because we work with kids that, uh, for which the typical model, it doesn't work. That's how they end up in all that in the first place. Uh, and I also have two kids that are middle schoolers here in Olathe and they're both special needs and they've been, uh, the support has been fantastic. Um, but I sit down with them, uh, you know, in the afternoon and try to help them figure out what it is that they need to do for their classes, finding things and, and all that. And it's, it is a struggle for me and I do this for a living, so I can imagine what these other parents feel. Okay, I, I, I understand why they're angry and why they want their kids back at school. I get it, and I want my kids back in school, but I also want them to be okay. Okay, I don't want them to get sick, I don't want to risk it. Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna stick with it and it's getting better. Um, and, uh, I, I, so I understand what parents are feeling, okay, I get that. Uh, we all want our kids back in school. The kids want to be back at school, the teachers want them back in school. Um, but parents need to understand that going back to school does not mean going back to normal. Normal is off the table right now, it's not safe. I think elementary schools have been in-person and they could tell you, those teachers will tell you, it is not what it used to be. Okay, now, uh, for families, they see this as a, as a switch from what they see as a bad learning situation to a better learning situation, a hybrid. Uh, but for teachers, it is not a switch, it is an addition. We have an enormous workload right now trying to make remote teaching work. And if we switch to hybrid, the remote doesn't go away for us, okay, we still have that. Now we have a whole new set of variables that we have to figure out in addition to the ones we're already struggling with. And teachers are giving a hundred and fifty percent to make this work. And now we're being asked to give three hundred percent. Um, we, we simply do not have another hundred and fifty percent to give. Teachers are redlining. And, um, we, we want to do that, we want to make it work, but we just don't have. And on top of that, we're being asked to risk our lives, um, being there. These parents are making the choice to send their kids to school. We don't have the choice to teach remote. I have kids, I have a medical condition, and if I get sick, um, anyway, that's my time. Um, thank you for letting me speak and thanks for letting me work in your district.
Thank you. Next up is Kathy Weimers.
I'm actually Lori Fairchild.
Oh, okay, sorry about that.
That's okay. Uh, I want to start by saying that we appreciate our teachers and building administrators who are working hard under less than ideal circumstances to educate our kids. We know that they are putting in long hours and doing everything possible to provide as much education as they can through a difficult format. That being said, we need to understand that this format is not working. The gating criteria is not working and our kids are being asked to bear burdens far higher than any other demographic in this pandemic. This needs to end and our kids need to be back in school. First, let's address the gating criteria. As I am sure you've heard many times, the gating criteria is flawed. Using a single flawed metric as a gating criteria is hurting our children. Please adopt a new gating criteria that considers all important metrics, including the ability to implement mitigation strategies and critical data points like hospitalizations and deaths. Spring Hill recently adopted a detailed gating criteria that takes into account all of these factors. I urge you to adopt a more comprehensive gating criteria, just as they did. Second, I'd like to share with you about how detrimental the online learning model is to teens. My daughter is seventeen and a senior at Olathe West. She is a straight A student and highly involved in the Green Tech Academy. She's always been a kid with plenty of grit and determination who can see a problem and figure out a way through. On Saturday, as she worked to make a PowerPoint for her jewelry-making class, a class I'd like to point out should be hands-on and not full of PowerPoint-making assignments. She looked at me and demanded, "Why are we even having school? This is stupid." This is not the first time she has expressed this sentiment. In what should be a semester filled with the culmination of all her hard work for the past twelve years, she is stuck sitting in a chair in front of a computer, wondering why she is even bothering to get out of bed. I asked her what one thing she wanted to know about being forced, wanted you to know about being forced into online learning. She said that she is taking two classes that will be the basis of knowledge she will need in her future career as a mechanical engineer. And I'm quoting her now. "The current system has already created massive gaps in my knowledge of both. My daughter is a well-adjusted, driven-to-succeed teenager, yet at least once every week since this has started, she's ended up in tears over a technology problem or a lack of direction or the inability to get the help that she needs to succeed. I can't even imagine how other teens without the family support our daughter has are coping with how they are feeling. Nationwide and worldwide, school districts are successfully opening schools. There is no reason that my daughter can go to church, go to an NFL game, go to the malls, or go to the bowling alley, but she cannot go to school. We cannot continue to ask our kids to bear an outsized portion of the responsibility for keeping cases down when they are the least affected by this disease. They are losing out on education, but more importantly, the isolation and the unending screen time are detrimental to their mental health. Our kids deserve better. They deserve for the Board of Education to look out for their best interests. Online learning is not in their best interests. I implore you to change the gating criteria to get our kids back in school. Thank you."
Thank you, Lori. Next up is Rowan Farah.
Good evening, my name is Rowan Farah and I am a junior at Olathe South High School. Thank you for allowing student voices to be heard tonight. Thank you for the, your attention to the many challenges our district has faced. I feel strongly about coming to speak to you tonight because I understand a review of our current gating criteria is on the agenda. I believe that we should uphold these criteria and stay aligned with the Johnson County Health Department's recommendations as originally decided. We knew and hoped we would return to school in person, but our understanding was that the current gating criteria would not be changed midsemester and sent us back earlier than it is safe to do. My family, as well as many others, had to make an incredibly difficult decision this summer, choosing whether to enroll for the remote learning option or for in-person classes. We ultimately decided to enroll me for in-person classes, trusting that I would not be at risk of entering a school building until COVID-nineteen cases in Johnson County dropped and stayed below, for two weeks, below a ten percent positive rate. Virtual learning and in-person learning were supposed to follow the same academic tracks, but I found out this week that two of my classes follow completely different textbooks in the remote learning classes. If I switched to remote learning, I will not have the same opportunities as my in-person peers. And if I do that, I will not be able to take my choir class as normal or do college now for my AP United States History class. I want to be in school. I miss my friends and my community. I miss in-person instruction, singing in my choir, performing musicals in our auditorium, and lunch with my friends in the hallways. As much as I wish I could be in my building, remote school is going better than expected. I have been able to reform, I have been able to form relationships with my teachers and receive an education as academically challenging as it would be in person. We receive mental breaks in our day we didn't have before and are able to clear our heads in between our classes since we're at home. When you ask middle and high school students where they want to be, most of us will tell you that we want to be in in-person school. But when you deepen that discussion and talk about what that is actually going to look like and the risks that is involved for teachers, students, and all of our families, it is a completely different discussion altogether. The risks involved are terrifying for me. If I am exposed and bring COVID-nineteen home, I risk exposing my special needs little sister to his health compromise. I also risk infecting my mom with this deadly virus only a year after losing my dad. Safety is my main concern. Changing these gating criteria to send us to in-person school earlier than it is safe causes risks Olathe families should not be faced with. If we continue to uphold these criteria as they stand, students won't have to choose between safety and academic equality. I want more than anything to get back to my school full-time and in-person, but only once it is safe to do so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Brian Connell.
Good evening. I'll take a little different approach than I did last. Hope it's packed. Tonight I am more worried and scared for this community than I have ever been. And if you are not, then you're not in the right place. Things are not working for our teachers or for our students or our administrators. I am a dad of two high-achieving high school students, one at North and one at West. Last night, they were unequivocally unwound for about an hour telling us everything that's not working. But I will tell you that I am absolutely not in favor of the hybrid that school districts are talking about. I'll get back to that. We all need to know the decisions that you are making and decisions not making are directly contributing to the mental, emotional, physical, financial instability of this community, its schools, its teachers, and its students. Not long ago, I lived in a community almost identical to Olathe. Growing, prosperous, youthful, filled with tremendous schools and filled with community pride. We used to say when I was a teenager there, "You only moved there if you had a good job or you had the ability to get a good job." Everything was competitive. Football, academics, neighborhood, city, school district to school district. And this happened to be during the last major recession. And this community, like Olathe, had the ability to recover faster, but pressure mounted. And it trickles down to our kids. I was a high school student at the time. One kid died in a car accident. His best friend couldn't handle it. Days later, he killed himself. Four days later, one of my best friends, a straight A student, killed himself. He was well-liked. Families and schools pointed at each other and said, "Hey, fear is the problem, we're not the problem. Nothing we're doing is responsible for it." That's rare, it's not connected to what we're choosing to do as leaders in our community. And then two more died. They left a note, their note said, and you can find it online, and I have this here to give to you. "If the smartest and the strongest can handle this world, then we won't either." Guns, cars, hangings, drugs, these kids are smart and deadly. Twenty-eight suicides in twelve months in Plano, Texas. All under the age of twenty. You have a freight train coming at you. And if you don't make the right decisions now, it's gonna crash and you're all responsible. That's all I've got to say. Got everything here, including the background information.
Next up is JT Weimers.
Hello, my name is JT Weimers. I'm a junior at Olathe North. And I've been talking with all of my friends and they all agree that we want to go back to school and that going back to school is the best for everyone. However, they've also all agreed that hybrid is not the way to do that. There's three reasons that this, people have said this. The first is that it cuts class time in half. Forty-five minutes isn't enough for two days of lessons. Uh, in the current situation, forty-five minutes is barely enough to get through the year reds and not the applicant, without even moving on to the application of them. So with that forty-five minutes, all you would be getting is the knowledge, you wouldn't learn how to apply it, you wouldn't be asking questions to the teacher and really learning. Another, um, problem is that there would be too few, uh, students in the classroom. For a class to function well, it needs about fifteen people in there. Because each student brings new ideas and, um, new, uh, new ideas and perspectives that they can, in that classroom. Um, and in one of my classes, we only have fifteen students attending. And eleven of those fifteen are M to W last names. In the morning, that would leave four students, four, to learn in that class. That's not enough to have new ideas and perspectives in the class. Um, so there have been, like, problems with the online and there will be problems with hybrid. But there's a way to do the best of both worlds, and that's to go in-person. I know that there's, uh, like, there are health concerns with going in-person, but the board has already taken all of the steps that they can to limit those. I know there's one-way classrooms and everyone's gonna be wearing masks and being six feet apart. We have made it as safe as possible. There are schools all around Kansas City who are opening now and haven't had any big problems yet. Schools like Rockhurst and St. Andrews and pretty much all of private schools. So why wouldn't that work for us? The cynical student might ask, is it because we don't have, is it because they have more money? Thank you for your
Thank you. Next up is Kathy Weimers.
Um, I am a mother of two students, one you just heard. He's a good student. One, you just heard, he's a good student. Then I have another who is the one that is not a good student because he thinks that school is a necessary evil. So from my perspective, the student you just heard, JT, he does well with online, has no problem, he learns, he does what he needs to do, what the teachers ask of him. Tonight, I've heard how teachers have told you how online is working. Yes, it is working for him. My other student, it is not working for. He has a hard time focusing on his computer screen and learning what the teacher is saying with being at home and having distractions. I have set him up with a desk. We've tried different rooms to help him not be unfocused. We've tried everything we can in our power to get him in the best learning environment that being online will help him learn, but none of it is working. And as I talked to my husband, who has been home this whole week because he got exposed to COVID, though he tested negative, he's still at home, he even said, "When I'm at home, I don't get nearly as much done as I do at work because I'm sitting in a work environment where I can concentrate and get done what I need to get done, and my creative juices are flowing there. Here, I get distracted by other things." Well, my son is just like that. He gets distracted by other things in the house, even though we have tried many things to try to put him in the best learning environment that he can be in. The only place that would be better is in school, in a teacher. There are other states who have their kids in school. There are private schools that are in school. I don't understand why Alathe, which is supposed to be one of the best public school districts in the Johnson County area, along with Blue Valley and Shawnee Mission, are not putting our schools and our kids in school. There, you've had all summer to know that this was going to come up. You had all summer to work on theories of what would happen if we weren't in school, if we did hyper, and if we did online. And all we've seen is nothing but struggles. And I get it, it's a big school district, there's a lot of different parts, but for that student who is not a good student and for that parent who is struggling with those kids who don't really want to be there, it is tough and it is hard for us to get our kids to concentrate, do what they need to do, and be in school. At least if they're in school, we know they're learning by osmosis, or at least being in the classroom, having to listen to the teacher. When you're at home, you don't have that option, even though you try as best as you can to put your kids in that environment. That's all.
Thank you. Next up is Megan Bricks.
Hi, good evening. My name is Megan Bricks, and this is my third year as an elementary music teacher. As a newer educator, I immediately learned that the skill of listening, not just to music, is as imperative as teaching. Throughout the past few weeks, I have listened with an open mind to my fellow colleagues in need of support. Today, I stand in front of you supporting the teachers who taught both in-person and online students during the hybrid model. I'm here supporting the teachers who stay at school late into the night to plan what is best for students and those who spend large portions of their day reminding students to wear their masks appropriately. I'm here in front of you to support the remote teachers who are giving their all to engage students in an online learning environment that is tough for them to navigate. I support the teachers who feel defeated after a day of teaching and the teachers who feel drained after giving their all to their students, leaving nothing for themselves. I support the teachers who are in quarantine, unable to teach their own students, as well as the teachers who have tested positive for COVID and are regaining their health. I stand in front of you supporting the teachers who have lost loved ones and need our support more now than ever before. I've listened to the teachers who need to put student safety before their own safety within their own classroom. I've listened to the teachers who have large class sizes, up to 26 at the elementary level currently. I myself have created 57 seating charts throughout hybrid and now full in-person. I have them here for you, and I heard today we're getting a new student, so seating chart number 58 is on its way. I've heard from the teachers who are worried about the safety of their students while eating snacks and eating lunch on masks next to another student, as well as playing with their friends at recess. I'm here supporting the teachers who receive ever-changing information and adapt as best as possible. I support the teachers who are forced to prioritize their physical safety over their own mental health. Today, I stand in front of you, the Alathe Board of Education, in support of the teachers who need to hear their voices and hear what is happening in our classrooms. I urge the community to listen before making decisions. More than ever before, we need to listen to one another. The most important thing we can do to support one another is give each other breaks, especially at the elementary level, we give each other breaks every minute, every day, every week. Listening is an imperative skill that we hope to instill in all of our students here in the Alathe School District. Sean Cuddy, for the Seven Habits of Happy Kids and the Leader in Me, says it best himself, "We must seek first to understand before we can be understood." Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Cheryl Lynn Girdel.
My name is Cheryl Lynn Girdel, and I am a high school teacher in the district. I've watched previous board meetings, and the absence of teachers was obvious, and undoubtedly somewhere the question has been asked and raised, "Why are teachers not present?" Some need to be home with their families in the evening, some fear retribution. This is a difficult decision, but my family is on their own, and I feel supported and trusted by my building administrators who will respect my right to share my observations and concerns. First, let me be clear. I am confident, and I'm speaking for all teachers in this, we want to be back in school, but we want to do it safely and follow the guidelines and recommendations of experienced medical expertise and scientists. I am asking the Board to uphold gating creating criteria you passed in August, that being for two weeks of testing with less than 10% and decreasing for middle and high schools to move to the hybrid. Changing or dispensing with the criteria now is changing the rules in the middle of the game. I came back to work with hope and trust in that criteria, and I beg you, the Board, to use that criteria to make wise decisions for the health and safety of students and staff. I trusted you, as families did across the district, when they made their very difficult decisions. It is true, children are generally impacted severely, but we are just beginning to learn the impact on adolescents. It is abundantly clear, the staff members are at the greatest risk of becoming ill and dying. The idea of moving to hybrid and having 1,500 students a day going through each high school with the rates climbing as they are, experts like Dr. Fauci and Dr. Redfield warning of another spike with the cold weather coming, is reckless. It shows no regard with health and safety. It's going to be their most vulnerable population in this scenario, the teachers. I'm ridiculously healthy, I'm not worried for myself, but COVID is known as a roulette for good reason. Every teacher learns early in their career that consistent procedures, strategies, and routines are crucial for students to learn. Last week was the first week, I felt, and I could tell that my colleagues were feeling the groove as well. The majority of students have been engaged and are working with us. Students are discovering they can learn from us. Teachers are increasingly competent, creative, and teaching. We need to stay the course. It is not perfect, and for some notably identified students, it is not. But those are problems to be solved safely and with respect for health and well-being of those in the frontline. Letting teachers solve these problems is a parody. However, we have had no voice in this decision. I do not know one single teacher who wants to move to hybrid, and I've networked across several buildings. We will have to stop in midstream and completely revamp our plans and focus. If you, as the Board of Education, are truly here to support and foster the education of students and children, please listen to your teachers. We want to solve the problem. We all would be counting that we have the opportunity to do this remotely. Had swine flu been as bad as this, we would have had to completely shut the schools down. We did not have the technology or bandwidth to do what we're doing today. So please honor the criteria and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Jennifer Anderson.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Anderson. I am an Alathe resident. I have a bachelor's degree in microbiology, and I'm a certified clinical laboratory scientist. Most importantly, though, I'm a stay-at-home mother of three children who attend Alathe public schools, one in elementary school, one in middle school, and one in high school. Thank you so much for working with us to get those elementary school students back into school. I really appreciate it. There has been quite a bit of concentration on the younger kids. However, in my home, the older children have been suffering more. Both of my older children are on the autism spectrum. They are both very high functioning, which in essence means that under normal circumstances, they struggle with making friends and navigating social situations. However, this can be overcome with lots of practice. Because of this, I specifically chose in-person schooling for them. The kids in the district have been out of school for too long. They need their peers and the social interaction practice that being in school provides. The neurodiverse kids in our district have 504 plans and IEPs, and they need that free and appropriate public education that the federal state law requires. These accommodations and services allow them to learn effectively, and they are not getting that from online schooling. Online schooling is not an appropriate educational fit for these kids. It's time to get them back into a classroom. My oldest child, starting in a new school as a ninth grader, is really struggling right now mentally and emotionally. She wants to make new friends, but she's unable to have any meaningful social interaction. She despises technology already and has a hard time navigating it. When she is overwhelmed, her mind stops running. She spends much of her online school day yelling in frustration, wanting to drop out of school and feeling like an overall failure. This unhealthy mental cycle happens about three to four times per day. Online schooling is not working for her. She needs face-to-face interaction with her peers and her teachers to feel happy, emotionally stable, and be able to learn. She needs to be in a classroom. My middle child is in seventh grade this year. His challenges with virtual schooling are different. He gets frustrated, and then he runs off. I receive multiple messages per day from teachers that he disappears. He also struggles to concentrate at home and ignores assignments that are too hard to figure out on his own because he can't figure out how to do them online. He needs teachers how to show him how to solve a problem instead of trying to talk him through it. It's nearly impossible for him to receive that level with online schooling. He needs to be in a classroom. I trust that all of us are concerned with the health and well-being of all the children. With my degree in microbiology, I understand the risks of COVID-19, and however, suicide is a much bigger threat for children from this virus. We need to get them into school where they will have the emotional and mental health that they need. Please help our teenagers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Charles Crayley.
Hello. Which one do I talk to?
That one.
My name is Nick Crayley, and I am a teacher at Mill Creek Campus. I want to share my story with you tonight, and I'm going to start 10 years ago. In 2010, my years-long battle with depression and anxiety came to a head when, while still attending school at KU, I went to the hospital for a week-long stay in inpatient mental health program. I was battling suicidal ideation every day and had been for many years. This battle with mental illness would see me lose virtually all my income, fail a year of college, and be forced to move back home, but I was persistent. I share this with you for two reasons. The first is that because of this, I know firsthand the weight of anxiety, trauma, and mental anguish when weighed against the value and importance of health and human life. And the second reason is to show you that being an educator is everything to me. I pushed through my own struggles so I could help kids with theirs, and in the decades since, I have learned that those kids, too, are persistent. I know the difficulty of the hard choice before you because I work in alternative education with students who struggle on normal days and struggle even more right now. The students I teach come in with their own difficulties that are unique and complex and cannot be solved with a single solution. Even in a perfect world, this takes grit and determination to break through to these students. We spend countless hours and pour our hearts into these students to help build a connection. Remote learning has made this more difficult than it already is, but both teachers and students have been working tirelessly to adapt. Every day, we are sharing our challenges and the stress that our new normal brings. Every day, we work together to make it a little better. The staff and students of Alternative Ed will continue to fight to figure it out because we are persistent. Adopting in-person learning against the clearly outlined data will not make my students' education easier. In fact, it will make it harder. My students have trauma, their lives are filled with instability, and switching to a new model is going to make those problems worse. And what I hope they, and what hope they do have, could be short-circuited if they see this disease unchecked ravage their community, because like me and like my students, this virus is persistent. I understand that staying remote is a hard choice and that it will upset some people. My decision to come here today was a hard choice that is going to upset many people that I care about and see every day. But now is the time of hard choices, and if we do not make the hard choices, the people who will have to pay the consequences will be these kids who look to inherit a community devastated by a disease whose far-reaching effects are still not totally understood. We can triumph as a community if we remain committed to our stated goal of keeping Alathe healthy and safe. I'm asking you tonight, just like me, my colleagues, and my students in this virus, to be persistent. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Kelly Hewitt.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kelly Hewitt. I'm here for two reasons. One, sometimes we make goals for ourselves, we don't review them for a while, so we forget what they are, so I'm just going to review your goals. Your first one is behavior and social-emotional development. Every student will benefit from an educational experience that fosters their behavioral, social, and emotional development. I'm a mentor for middle and high school girls, and in the last month, they have come to me because they have feelings of anger, feelings of depression, suicidal thoughts. Even last night at 11:30, I was texting with a girl, trying to talk her out of her depression and the thoughts that she was having for being lonely. She's lonely because she's not in school and she's new to this district, so she's not able to make good friends with her. Your second goal is effective systems and prioritized resources. I think we all know that the systems are failing. Zoom is spotty. Student View is not working. Wi-Fi is horrible for a lot of these students. My son's Wi-Fi went down. We're fortunate enough to have backup hotspots in our house. Students are confused, should they be sending their homework into Google Classroom? Student View, should they email it? They don't know anymore how they're supposed to be getting their homework in. Your third goal is high academic expectations for all. These kids have been challenged because now videos and homework are taking the place of their teachers. My son is online maybe 15, 20 minutes with a teacher, and then she drops videos and/or he drops videos and homework for them to do the last 30, 45 minutes of their school day. Your last goal is human capital. Attract, develop, and engage and retain high-quality talent. You guys have done a phenomenal job. You like the school district has some of the best teachers I've ever seen. Unfortunately, they're frustrated. You're going to lose them to other school districts, and a lot of them are actually just leaving the education system because they can't handle it anymore. My second reason for coming today is because I wanted you to know that you failed me, you have failed my son, and you're failing the teachers, and tomorrow, I'm unenrolling my child in the Alathe public school system. I'm going to start from school. Thank you.
Next up is Rhonda Reese.
Thank you. My name is Rhonda Rice. I'm the Science Department Chair at Alathe North and an AP Chemistry teacher, the lead teacher in the Distinguished Scholar Science Academy. This is my 32nd year teaching in Alathe. I've had a wonderful career. Over my career, I've brought in over $145,000 grant money into the district. I have over 100 former students that are doctors, and I've had the pleasure of helping hire four of my former students to teach in the department with me. I've had a wonderful career, and I hope it will continue. Teaching remotely is certainly not the optimal way to teach, especially teaching AP Chem, but I'm happy to report that we are being quite successful. We all want our old world back, but for the foreseeable future, that's not happening. I am very concerned about simply adopting the hybrid model and that it will upend our current progress. Under any measure, it is clear that virus cases in the metro area are not going down under any gating criteria. I also understand that there are different gating criterias and that things with the virus change. That's how science works. We adapt. I'm deeply concerned about two issues. I fear that we will lose teachers. If we start a new model, flood our buildings without distancing, I have been on over 30 phone calls phone calls with teachers who may resign or retire. If we pack the buildings without social distancing, myself included, as an ovarian cancer survivor that now has heart issues caused by my treatment, my risk is very high for complications. It is almost impossible to find any chemistry or physics teachers before the pandemic. We cannot lose a teacher. We are the district's most valuable resource. I am very concerned with the mental health and the stress on our teachers and our students. We are not in an easy time. But the current hybrid schedule or going back full-time, neither are good choices. I understand that the purpose of a hybrid schedule is to reduce the number of people in a building, and that comes at the cost of reducing our actual contact time with students by 50%. It is not possible to teach an AP course in half the time. If I could do that, I would have been doing that for 22 years. We will not meet national contact requirement time by the College Board. Our students will only see half of the curriculum, no matter what we do. You can't double the temperature on cooking a roast and get it done twice as fast. It just ruins it. The benefit of students being in the building for 45 minutes classes does not outweigh losing half of our class time. Seeing AP students or new English language learner students for 45 minutes every other day is not adequate. I understand younger students. I understand that there are challenges with online learning. Let's be creative and maybe mix it a little. 45 minutes is not enough time.
Thank you. Next up is Julie Staley.
Hello. I'm Julie Staley. I'm here as a remote elementary classroom teacher. The teachers from my classroom in the school building, I'm a lifelong Olathe resident, graduate from Olathe North. Most of all, I'm concerned for the safety of students and staff. The field of education is made up of people that want to please and accommodate. Our number-one question right now should be, is this safe? And if the data says it's not safe, we have to be okay with saying we can't do that. Whether it's in-person learning, sports, extraviricular activities, or school pictures, people want to hear, yes, I can do that, or yes, that can happen. And usually, that's what our response would be. At this time, it is okay to say no. There is not, this is not a typical school year. We must stop trying to force this year to be like any other year. Our responsibilities are to keep students safe and provide education. This year, we have to do this through a different lens. We have to be okay that some things that we would like to do just can't be done because keeping students safe isn't just a fire drill anymore. For all of us to be able to make informed decisions, we must have transparency. Transparency of what our positive numbers and rates are and transparency of what it really looks like in a school building. The district has now added a dashboard on the district website, and if people check that dashboard, they will see that COVID is happening in our schools. It is here. What is not transparent is what it looks like in a school. The county guideline is six-foot distance maintained as much as possible, and if that cannot be maintained, a three-foot distance should be maintained. And it also says this is important when in proximity with others for longer than 10 minutes. This is not happening. This is not possible. Desks are inches apart. We know that consistency and routine build success for students. This is important now more than ever. We must be consistent with our expectations for safety and consistent with our learning routine. Switching back and forth creates anxiety for what is expected, and changing criteria just to get what we want does not equal what is safest for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Zachary Baker.
Hello. My name is Zachary Baker. I am the son and the brother of educators that have taught in this district since 1971. I'm a product of this school district, so I have a vested interest in this and a lot of experience in listening to teachers for my whole life. I want to be here to advocate for teachers. I want to say that I feel like this body has been unfairly asked to solve problems, issues at home for parents, whether it's financial, daycare. I mean, there's a lot of different posts of reasons why they would like for kids to go into school. I do not believe that that is a problem that this body needs to solve. That is for the state legislatures, and I would be happy to go with them to the state Capitol, to their meetings, and you know, whether that's a stimulus package or whatever that might need to be. But I feel like this body's concern should be child safety, teacher safety, and then children learning, and in that order. And we're all familiar with flow charts, but you don't move on to the next one until the first one is sat. And in, by no gating criteria do I see where putting every child and teacher in a room at the same time, that that says go on to the next. And I can empathize with the parents at home and the children that are struggling with online learning. I get it. It's tough. People with their regular-day jobs, it's tough. Everyone's had to adapt this year. That doesn't mean that you go beyond the first two steps, which is safe. This is the picture of the school district website, and it shows the student new cases data per week and the teacher new cases data per week. Right now, students are outpacing teachers 33 to 21, averaging about 10 a week or so. And that's not national data. That's not CDC. That's this school district. And I'll go to a point that I heard when I was sitting in the hallway of a teacher that spoke earlier saying, "Look at my roster," and point to me, "Which one? These numbers aren't zero." You know, you want to talk about mental health with kids, what's it going to be like when some of these start turning into that? You know, just a matter of statistics. If you, the cases keep going, eventually it's going to reach someone with asthma or someone with a mom with cancer, or grandma, or your neighbor, or whatever, or a sibling. Some of these kids have siblings in colleges. I think we've all seen on TV how well they've been distancing out the public in net bars and whatnot. I just don't, I don't see how you move on to the next step. This color code gating criteria, you know, that's fine and dandy. In real life, teachers being able to lesson plan around that, it's a moving target. So I would just ask you to set them up for success by giving them some stability of either all-in learning or, at the very least, stay what it is right now. Just don't put in all in-person at one time. They, you know.
So that's, time's up. Sorry.
I'm sorry. Thank you for your time.
All right. And we are halfway through. It's been requested by a few to have a comfort break, so let's take a 10-minute comfort break, and we'll come back at about 7:30.
Open the doors as well when we air out the room.
Mr. Beveridge, can you give us an update where we are like a progress report?
So we have 27 that we've done, a few skipped, but for the most part, and we have 45 total. So we're about halfway through.
Okay, awesome.
Any other questions? No? Okay, let's move on to Cindy Holsher.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everybody. First off, thank you so much to the board members, the fact you are here, put in a position of making many tough decisions this school year is certainly not lost on me. The decision-making process sadly has been pushed down all the way to the school board level, which is certainly what one would not have expected in a pandemic. Your work and time is very much appreciated. I have three kiddos in the Olathe School District, a senior freshman and eighth grader. As we approach the new school year, we made a determination of remote instruction for our children. While each really wanted to be in person with their friends and the teachers, that made hybrid somewhat enticing, but ultimately, the need for consistency and a full day of learning was desired. Also, they also felt the importance and responsibility of keeping others safe, and they didn't want to be the reason that a peer or teacher fell ill. Of course, there were a few glitches as everything got started the first couple of days, but by and large, the remote learning experience has been very positive for us. Teachers have worked extremely hard to incorporate new learning techniques, and it's been working. Kids are engaged, they are interacting with one another, and they are learning. Within just a couple of days from the first floor of my house, I could hear my kids upstairs, online, engaging, interacting with their friends and teachers, and enjoying the learning environment. When asked about our experience with the start of the school year, I have been extremely proud to tell people that the Olathe District has done an exceptional job in these very different circumstances. In my other role as a state representative, I have heard from many parents who have been very pleasantly surprised by the remote learning environment, indicating that they are seeing the same experience for their middle schoolers and high schoolers. The change that has recently been circulating to implement hybrid with remote students, matching the hybrid schedule, is concerning. It would mean substantially less learning time for remote students, which may surprise many, is not positively viewed by my kids as well as numerous other students. It seems everyone, teachers, students, parents, have just gotten into a good rhythm just now with this new learning environment, and now we're possibly talking about disrupting it. Of course, there are additional issues. For my senior, it will be extremely difficult to get adequate preparation for AP exams in half the time. Ultimately, she and other seniors will be measured and compared to other kids from around the country by their performance, and we will have likely done them a disservice with the substantially reduced ours. And of course, it could affect the reputation of our award-winning excellent district. From my personal situation as a parent as well as a legislator, to me, there's something else just as important that is concerning, the impact on our teachers. We have taken so many different directions, necessitating extreme flexibility for all of our educators while requiring the delivery of excellent instruction. And now we are possibly asking them to make another change. It makes me wonder for our teachers, how much is too much? Like you, the reality of this pandemic has been pushed down to them, and they are left to navigate through some of this territory. In closing, I once again praise this district for the work that has been done in providing consistent, organized, remote learning environment, which is allowing so many of our students to thrive. I hope we will keep science at the forefront along with the views of our students and teachers, and while our teachers can't make this virus disappear, please know they are working some magic with our students in this new format. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Keegan Fisher.
Hello, I'm Keegan Fisher. I'm a senior at Olathe North High. I'd like to start off by saying thank you to each and every one of the board members. So far, the policies that you have implemented in response to COVID-19 have been effective. Students are attending classes and learning, but most importantly, the entirety of the school district, including the staff and administration, has been safe. By changing the gating criteria or allowing hybrid learning, you would be risking the success you have experienced so far. The gating criteria is a vital piece of the COVID-19 response. Removing and/or making it less strict could have potentially dire consequences. Listening to the proper health authorities and following their guidelines is the only reasonable course of action. I understand that we are all tired of the pandemic and wish things were back to normal, but I implore you to prioritize the health of your students, teachers, and staff above all else. As for hybrid learning, implementing that in secondary education would really cut our time with teachers in half, then you must avoid it at all costs. In addition to this, teachers will need time to adjust their curriculum from an online basis to hybrid. In-person and online teachers would need to completely restructure the way they teach their classes to fit the class times dictated by the hybrid model. It would take at least a week to get the new schedule rolling, and that's for conservative S. The amount of time we would lose with our teachers to make hybrid learning feasible would defeat the purpose of implementing it. Due to the success of online learning, there is no rational reason to move to hybrid learning. The consensus among all the students I have talked with is that we can make online learning work. Online learning has not been perfect, but it has accomplished the goal of recreating the classroom environment in a safe way. In these unpredictable times, the safest option that does not impede students to continue learning is the best option. If we look specifically at the threat that COVID-19 poses to us, now cannot be a worse time to loosen restrictions on online learning and social distancing. COVID-19 is far from slowing down. We are still in the middle of the pandemic, and the virus continues to spread at a high rate of infection despite our current attempts to socially distance and wear masks. Please maintain our current level of online learning and keep the school district from exacerbating our current situation. If the school board is to make any changes, it should be defined ways to better support our teachers. Among these is listening to their suggestions and advice, especially concerning ways to adapt the curriculum to online learning, technological solutions to grading and submission of assignments. Our teachers have years of experience in the classroom, and they know best what needs to be done to make online learning feasible. Thank you for your time, and again, I implore you to prioritize the health of your students, teachers, and staff above all else. The right decision is not always easy, it's not always the obvious thing to do, but it's what needs to be done.
Thank you, Keegan. Next up is Danae Esteban.
Hi, my name is Danae Esteban. I'm a senior from Olathe East, and before getting started, I would just like to thank the board for giving us this opportunity to come and give testimony and just share our thoughts. So my experience online hasn't been terrible so far. There are some teachers who are very tech savvy and others who struggle a little bit, but fellow classmates of mine have stated how learning in the home can be very difficult just because learning in the classroom just creates a better environment to really absorb all the material. And even teachers of mine have expressed wishes of how teaching certain subjects and topics are, they can't be taught as well or received by students as well when they are taught online. And additionally, as a dyslexic student, I have dyslexia, and as a student with a learning difference like that, online learning has been very challenging. Certain accommodations such as extra time on tests or quizzes are pretty much impossible and can't be given to me. And also due to my learning difference, I need that extra one-on-one time with my teachers, which I'm just simply not getting online. Now, I understand the concern between of both the teachers and students about going to in-person school, but I urge the board to consider opening the schools up for in-person learning. However, the focus must lie within the system in which we are brought back. If that means rather than splitting us into two groups for a hybrid and rather into three, then that's what needs to be done. Or if, or I think the board should consider allowing only seniors to return back to school for full-time learning, because I truly believe that in-person learning is the best option as long as it's done safely. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Crystal Pence.
Olathe School Board, my name is Crystal Pence, and as speaker number 32, I'm sure I have nothing new to tell you. You are faced with a decision tonight that will change, will change how families function. Your decision will please some and frustrate others, but in reality, you are set forth with making the best choice for a most unknown future. As a mother of three kids in the Olathe School District, a wife of an Olathe High School teacher, and an employee for a local hospital ICU, I understand the gravity and weight of your decision. Many of the plans you're reviewing tonight are similar, and frankly, the best we can do is rely on numbers. This is awfully unsettling. Numbers are not always perfect and cannot factor in the human element of life and the dynamics of change. However, one thing we can ask is that no matter what plan you feel is best, please pass over any option with hybrid learning. This does not work, and there is no feasible way to allow appropriate instruction in a hybrid learning method. My youngest children in elementary school experienced hybrid learning over the last few weeks. Although their lessons were as good as possible, the reality is they did not learn much. The logistics of varying daycare and the individuals needed to watch my kids while I was at work only increased their exposure to more people in the community. There also was no schedule or routine. In a time in which the world is facing a pandemic and everything has changed for these kids and families, changing what they do every one to two days only uproots their lives further and causes more distress. This is even more of a concern for middle and high school students. No matter which way hybrid is attempted, there is absolutely no way to successfully teach middle and high school in a hybrid setting. There will be much less actual learning time from a teacher, which does not mean the teacher is working less. On the contrary, the teacher is working double or triple as hard to modify their lessons for so many different learning environments. Frankly, I enjoy seeing my husband and his involvement with our family. In the hybrid method, rest assured, every ounce of his free time will be to make lessons for the students at home, the students in school, and the day everyone is remote. For our student sanity and our teacher sanity, and frankly, the community sanity, feel free to choose whichever gating plan is best, but just to omit the hybrid section. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Lake Souls.
Hi, my name is Lake Souls, and I am a freshman out of Olathe South. Bored, confused, unmotivated, stressed, and isolated. This is how I and many of my peers are feeling, and this is not at all how I thought my freshman year of high school would go. I've tried to stay positive during these crazy times, but with the situation, it gets harder and harder every day. I'm here to talk today about why the students need to be back in school full-time. Before we went back to school, you took a poll to see who wanted online and who wanted in-person school. I know that when I chose in-person school, a risk came with it as well as many sacrifices. One of those was not being able to be around my grandparents to keep them safe because they are some of the most important people in my life and my biggest inspirations. But, school is also important to me, and they understand that and support me in my decision. Everyone who chose in-person school made a sacrifice like that for our education, and we were all prepared to take the precautions necessary to keep everyone in the school safe. Students who wanted less risk chose remote learning, so we all had a choice. Students who chose in-person did not feel as though online schooling would be sufficient. Having been remote for the last four weeks, I know now that we were right. We need to be in person. We will wear masks, we will social distance as much as possible, we will wash our hands, we will take the risk to have the right education for us. The reason we are pushing for in-person school is because the online stuff isn't working, contrary to what all the teachers have told you tonight. It makes it extremely difficult to pay attention, there are way too many technical difficulties. We cannot get one-on-one time with our teachers, and we're staring at a screen seven hours a day, five days a week. It's harder to stay organized, we're not getting any real social interaction, and a lot of our education and projects and assignments are very limited. Since we're all online, it's much harder to do hands-on projects, and we can't really do group things. It's also very obvious to the kids that the teachers are struggling with this too. They're just as, if not more stressed than we are, and it isn't fair to them. They're trying their hardest, and I hate to see them having such a hard time. I'm an honor roll student, and today I checked my honors biology grade and about flipped out when I saw that I had an F. Even though Google Classroom showed that I turned in my assignment, my teacher didn't see it, and I got no credit. Now, I know that this will be fixed, but I shouldn't have to worry about that on top of everything else that high school is worried about. And I spent the summer attending youth group in person, I attended four theater camps in person. So we masked up, we social distanced, and nobody got sick. My sister played competitive softball every weekend this summer, and they took the required precautions and nobody got sick. My sister worked at a local sandwich store all summer. None of the employees got sick. So please, stop being too scared to let us go back. No hybrid, full-time, in-person, or remote. That's the choice you gave us, that's the choice we weighed, and that's the choice we want. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Lake. Next up is Heather Terranova.
Hi, thank you all for having me, I'm Heather Terranova. I had two children in Olathe School District. My husband and I recently pulled our dyslexic daughter out because Olathe was not able to meet her special needs. I'm here to talk about my second child, who's a sophomore at Olathe East, and I dread and I fear that Olathe is slowly missing his educational needs as well. He's a pretty typical 16-year-old boy. He's not engaged by online learning, he's not engaged by classes. There's lots of sleeping, there's very little motivation to do a whole lot more. As a parent, it's very concerning. We opted for in-person learning for a reason. We counseled his physician, our family felt like that was the best need for him. I still feel wholeheartedly that education need for him is school. I wanted to share some feedback that he gave because the Olathe school shared a picture of the Bentwood teaching staff on Monday, they welcomed him back to school. Thought that was fantastic as a parent, I think we all felt excitement, hey, it's the turning of the leaf, we're gonna go back to school. My son gave me a whole new perspective when he sent it to me. He sent the picture and he said, "Mom, this is crap. If these teachers can be in a group photo like this with no social distancing, why can't I be at school? Why can't I take my team?" I just felt like it was imperative that you guys hear the perspective of these kids, because I commend you guys, I know this job is hard, but these kids are really struggling, and they need their teachers, they need their peers, they need their teachers. Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you. Next up is Tammy Maffet.
Hi, my name is, my name is Tammy Maffet. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am the mother of a current middle schooler and high schooler. My husband and I moved to Olathe 10 years ago from northeast Ohio because we sought a high-quality public education for our children. Despite the best efforts of our teachers, our wonderful teachers are creative, but they're not getting quality education right now. Our students want and need full-time in-person learning. Regardless of which set of gating criteria is decided upon tonight, I hope the board will use any school reopening recommendations as just that, recommendations. Our public health officials, as important as their role is, they only see this pandemic through the lens of theoretical science and models. These don't necessarily translate to policies on the ground that work for the population they impact. Public health sees this problem from their specific point of view. They are not experts in how their recommended policies might impact the people who actually live here. Nobody is an expert in all areas. Today, I heard a physician say that policy is the sum of science, values, and what can actually be achieved in the real world. None of us get to see our greatest ambitions actually achieved, we are all limited by reality. Our reality right now is the public health grand ambition to mitigate the spread of the SARS-CoV-2 virus is actually causing undue harm to the overall well-being of our students, their families, and the entire community. Our students, they're depressed, they're falling behind academically, they're lonely, they have headaches, they have technological issues, and they're falling asleep in the middle of the day, unfortunately, that's a true story. And their parents are losing work time, employers are losing productivity, the entire community is affected by the decision. I know Johnson County just issued new gating criteria a little while ago, I got to glance at it. I understand percent positivity will always be a component of determining the infection rate in the community, but it's important to take into consideration that Kansas as a state ranks number 47 of all 50 states per total test performed per 100,000 residents, and this is per Johns Hopkins University. Kansas has performed merely 17,000 tests per 100,000 residents and averages 2,200 cases per 100,000. By comparison, New York State has performed over 54,000 tests per 100,000 residents and averages 2,300 cases. Their percent positivity overall is much lower than ours. This discrepancy makes it hard to uniformly rely upon percent positivity. Gating criteria suggestions such as those from the CDC that include hospitalizations, ICU capacity, and some other metrics can help us better visualize the risks we are most concerned about with this virus. But it's the risks outside of the virus that need addressed. Our children are miserable at home. We would like them to return to full-time classes. I have a lot more to say, but I'm out of time.
Thank you. Next up is Brandy Collins.
Hello, I was going to say thank you, but instead, I'm going to say I am sorry that you're in such a I was going to say thank you, but instead I'm going to say I am sorry that you're in such a difficult seems like all the kids want to go back to school. I know it's a tough situation. I want to be here for you and that's why I'm here. So, you know, instead of voting for one or the other, I kind of wanted to say one I don't like. And here we go. So, at first, we did online. I wanted to be in-person. The kids wanted to be in-person. We think they should be in-person. But, online has been working. They're getting routine. They're engaged. The teachers are somewhat, you know, getting to figure it out. They're in a rhythm. And we have something working here. But what we don't want is the AMPM hybrid model. I don't think that's a good, that particular model. There's probably some other good hybrid models that maybe other districts have done. I don't like the AMPM. It's bad for kids. It's bad for teachers. It's a lose for, the kids lose. They lose half their instruction time. They need instruction. They need teachers to teach. I hate to say it, I feel like my kids are a little bit failed in the spring. We only had one teacher teaching because they had AIDS. So, we just, I don't want that to happen again. We need class time. We need teacher time. We can't continue to do this. And it's a lose for teachers. I don't even have any teacher friends really, but, I mean, just looking at it, that they're teaching twice and they're exposed to all the kids. I mean, it's probably worse for the teachers than just going back full-time. So I don't know why we think that's a good model. And that's from parents. And then I have two kids, one Aletha North and one Aletha Northwest. This is from my senior at Aletha North. He couldn't be very supportive tonight. I'm gonna read his little spiel.
Hi, my name is TJ Collins. I'm a senior at Aletha North. I have been an AP student since freshman year and have been very involved in high school. As an AP student, it's been difficult learning in the online setting, so I do support the idea of in-person, but not the AMPM hybrid model. To put it kindly, it's inadequate. This year, school started around a month late and now staff and students are already playing catch-up. And now the district is suggesting we have half as much time as we need to top off a late start. Tell me, when, do you think it's possible for students to be prepared for AP tests come spring when we have a partial first quarter and now even less time if we do the hybrid AMPM? Please do not force us to follow such an unpopular schedule. We need school. We need class time. Please do not fail us.
Thank you. Next up is Anna Palacio.
My name is Anna Palacio. I am a senior at Aletha South and I am sharing feedback eighth grader Ally Aaron Holes gathered from students throughout the district. These are the answers to what would you like the Board of Education and our superintendent to know about virtual learning? First student, I am scared I won't score well on my AP test because of virtual learning, which will mess up my college credits even more. I didn't do well on my AP English test last year and it was because the class went virtual. I was doing great in the class until the school closed. I don't feel like I'm learning anything this year. Second student, this is the worst thing ever. I'm an AP, I've been an AV student for my whole life and I have a D in geometry. It's frustrating to have computers lock up, downloads not work, and not have someone explain to me how to work the problem without audio cutting out or freezing up. I hate this. The platform is horrible. It's boring, hard to concentrate, and lonely. Next student, I don't know my teachers. I don't know anyone in my classes and I hate it. Too many different platforms to use and keep track of assignments. Next student, as a person with high anxiety, the stress is hard because everything is unorganized. I try emailing my teacher and ask the help desk and don't get answers. I'm stressed over my grades and what I need to do. I'm also a senior and want to have a semi-normal senior year. It's something I've been looking forward to since I was a little girl. Next student, not only is virtual learning a work in progress, it's also causing the majority of my stress. My teachers load me with more work than they would in-person, which makes it difficult at home with my personal life and work. Along with all the assignments that I need to do for each class, the difficulty of finding them online or turning them in may be the most frustrating part. In-person is easier and better organized for my personal learning success. Next student, virtual learning is stressful because it's harder to learn things. Social interaction between classmates is awkward because you don't have a lot of chances to talk to them. Often, students are put on the spot when teacher calls on them. The kid might have anxiety and it's hard for them to speak up. Figuring out how to submit and do work in apps, we've had little to no experience with, is difficult. It is also hard to ask a teacher question individually without going through email. Home life is different for different people and it makes it that much harder for them to learn or speak during class. Video cameras are required for every class and some people just aren't comfortable with it. It's not that they aren't paying attention and they, it's not that they're not paying attention. They might be too anxious or they just don't want to show their face. Lots of students who are normally straight A students are getting lower grades. My friends who are in honors are getting swamped with homework and they are very stressed out. Next student, virtual learning is a good idea, but not for a long-term plan. If we go to school in-person, there's no connection in shoes or volume issues and the teachers can make sure everyone is paying attention and not on their phones off-screen. You can actually have someone there beside you guiding you on how to do something that you don't know how to do instead of trying to do it while someone tries their best to explain how to fix the issue over Zoom. If I'm required to wear a mask all day at school, I will gladly do so for a chance to attend the school I've been preparing to go to for all of middle school. Virtual learning is not what I saw myself doing in freshman year. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Anna. Next up is Holly Palacio.
Hello again. My name is Holly Palacio. Thank you again for letting us come to speak to you. Today is October first and it is the first day of Dyslexia Awareness Month. You have met several students tonight and some teachers for whom virtual learning is going well. My dyslexic student, it is not going. In addition to his learning challenges, he also has a concussion. He has been restricted from online use. Screen use is to be limited to forty-five minutes a day. And when you are required to be in class for six and a half hours a day online, you now do not have access to your education. You may also remember that I have a special needs student. I have been an active advocate for that child, many others. And despite the district's failure to teach our dyslexic students to read, our special needs son's immense challenges academically, we've never needed to bring an attorney to an IEP or a 504 meeting until this year. This fall, to our astonishment, we needed an attorney in order to provoke an offer of appropriate education for our special needs son. He was offered one hour of in-person learning per week and a three-hour offering online, fully half of what any other student in his age group was offered. We were able to get some of that corrected, but he is still less than half of what his peers have on paper. My seventeen-year-old said it best. It should not be this hard. To those of you who have the honor and privilege of representing the teachers in this district, you are doing them a disservice. You are not advocating for what is best for students. The motto on the front of this building says, "Students prepared for their future." You are actively thwarting efforts to get teachers back in-person with students. Can you honestly say you are doing that? And if you are not doing that, what are you doing? I was contacted by families whose students were afraid to come here today. And I know personally of teachers worried about backlash for sharing this same opinion with you tonight. The teachers are doing the best they can with what they are given. We appreciate their effort, care, and dedication. This is failing our kids. My senior will not be prepared for college and is already regretting. The plan she is on for College Now classes. Another family shared that an daughter with an IEP with hers in every core class is slipping further behind. Please get them back in the classroom.
Thank you, Holly. Next up is Brennan Stetling. Steady, Stelting?
Stelting. Hello, my name is Brennan Stelting. I'm a junior at Aletha South. I'm reading the actual comments made by Aletha Public Student from the recent survey by Ally Aaron Holes. I want things to be like they were. Online is stressful and frustrating. Everything is rushed and I never get a chance to ask questions. In my opinion, this sucks. There are so many problems and no one to ask. Laptops crash and teachers can't help solve a problem. I can't learn a lesson because I'm a visual person, so I need to feel like I'm comfortable and meet you. But due to all of this, I feel lonely and shy. I'm a very outgoing person and this is changing and it's not a good change. So please, open the school back up and we can have normal life. If we have to wear masks, then I'm okay with that. I want to go back to school in-person. I'm struggling at home, trying to learn. And I have bad grades now. I've never had bad grades. I love school and now I hate it. I have always been a straight A student. All my teachers would consider me a focused and hard worker. However, virtual school has caused my grades to drop, my work ethic to go down, and my stress level to go up. I'm doing my best, but the longer virtual school continues, the harder it is to stay focused. Virtual learning has been stressing me so much. I am on the Aletha West freshman volleyball team. When we go to play our games, half of us can't even focus on the game because of how stressed we're going to be online school. I am a very shy person and I am working on that, but this virtual learning is not helping me. I am more stressed and afraid to ask or answer questions over Zoom than I am in-person, which is really hurting my clarity. I want to be at school with my teachers and classmates. I've never really liked school, but now I truly hate it. It's so hard to get help if I am having a hard time on the side. It's so hard for me to stay focused throughout the day. My parents are worried about my mental well-being. I'm terrified that I am becoming depressed. I'm mad and sad all the time. I'm yelling at my family a whole lot. I don't have any energy to do anything. Please, let us go back to school. It's my seventh grade year and I've been looking forward to play volleyball and basketball for my middle school team. And that was taken away from me. Even though I have friends in other districts that were able to play, this isn't fair. My teachers have been doing a good job to help me learn. When I don't understand, I don't feel like I can ask for help. Not because they haven't been open to help, but because I'm embarrassed to ask. If we were at school, I wouldn't feel singled out and bad. I hate virtual learning. I am more scared of my mental health than the virus. A good way to help that is going back to in-person. If people are nervous, they stay at home. Virtual learning makes me stressed to the max. Most of us cry every night about online school. It makes us feel exhausted and empty.
Sorry, Dan Robb, but your time's up. Thank you. Next up is Carter Stelting.
Distinguished members of the board, my name is Carter Stelting. I am a junior at Aletha South High School. I am reading the actual comments made by Aletha South Public School students. All of these are Aletha Public School students. At the end of a virtual learning day, I feel more mentally, physically exhausted when I am in-person than I am not in-person. Being in my room all day in front of a screen isn't good for my health or anyone else's. In all capital letters, I read, "It sucks. Please let us go back to school. My parents are making me go to a private school if we do not go back." Make sure you actually think about what the kids need. There are kids in unsafe home environments and sometimes their only escape is school. And some kids need the food at school or they just don't eat in general. Kids need school. I have no motivation for school at home. Virtual learning is terrible. It is a hindrance to my education and it is truly sad that the board has postponed the start of school just to disappoint, leave, behind the students in this way. My time in the Quest program has been ruined for the first quarter of my freshman year because of this. I feel isolated. I feel like I am getting behind and I won't be able to catch up. I feel like my opinion and voice does not matter. Virtual learning is awful. I am less likely to ask questions. I don't think that most of the teachers even know my name. Virtual learning is extremely difficult for me. I don't understand the new concepts and I'm embarrassed to ask questions on the Zoom call. Virtual learning is very frustrating and it gives me a lot of anxiety issues. Please let us go back to school before this impacts our PPA and reduces the chance of qualifying for scholarships. Virtual learning stresses me out because I'm not learned, I'm not learning everything I'm supposed to. By the end of the day when I am virtually learning, I am so much more tired than when I go to in-person school. I have also been getting headaches and I didn't used to get them before. Virtual learning makes the students and teachers very stressed out. We all feel like if we could just go back to school, then maybe it would feel like learning is not a threat anymore. I feel like I'm slowly dying all day sitting in front of a computer. Virtual learning is very stressful. I wouldn't be falling behind if I was in-person, but now I'm failing and I'm behind on my assignments. Virtual learning is one of the hardest things for me to go through every day. Staring at a screen for eight-plus hours a day is with mentally and physically exhaustion and quite frankly, not healthy at all. Many students, including myself, have troubled focusing in classrooms, but online school makes it a thousand times more difficult to focus. Even after eight hours a day, we spend a day on Zoom. Eight hours we spend on Zoom. Teachers are assigning us more homework than ever before. I feel, I don't feel comfortable. We should allow we go back to school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Carter. Next up is Reagan Stelting.
My name is Reagan Stelting. I am a freshman at Aletha South. I'm reading actual comments made by Aletha Public School students from the recent survey by Ally Aaron Holes. You just feel alone. If you don't understand something, a teacher says it isn't guaranteed that they will be able to help you. We miss so much interaction with our fellow students and our teachers can't reach us kids as much. It is exhausting, sitting in front of a screen for seven and a half hours a day and sitting down most of the time. Also, four minutes doesn't give me enough time to move around as a passing period. It sucks. I hate it. I don't think that virtual learning is going good. For the past three weeks, all I have been is stressed, overwhelmed, and extremely frustrated. My eyes have been hurting and I have just been feeling down and angry all the time. It's really hard to learn when I can't figure out how to work the technology so that I can learn. Every single day, I wake up and I don't want to wake up. I feel like every day is the same thing and it gets harder and harder with every passing second. There's nothing enjoyable about this experience and I'd rather drop out and prepare for college rather than spend one more second being a puppet for this unreliable and unbelievable school district that not only has ruined my senior year, but ruthlessly dragged it through the mud and stomped on it until it couldn't handle it anymore. Nothing about my life is positive right now and there's nobody to blame except the school district and their bogus decisions. Listen to your students. They know more than anybody about what it's like to go through this. I've been very stressed with virtual learning. I feel like it is very hard to focus on what the teacher is saying and it's hard to ask questions. This is my eighth grade year and I'm sad. Learning at home has been stressful for my mom. She has taken a pay cut to stay at home with me. I'm sad I didn't get to play football this year. My eyes hurt. I get headaches. I miss my friends. I hate online. I miss my friends in sports. I feel like people have forgotten about us. It is very confusing and I absolutely hate it. It's horrible. I hate learning this way. I made my choice. Why was my choice ignored? I miss human connection and being able to experience sports and activities with my peers. Our choice was taken away from us and everything we worked so hard for is now off limits with no end in sight. It feels awful. Virtual learning just isn't the same as normal learning. I get less exercise and don't get to see anyone all day. Sports being canceled is just so Sports being canceled is just so frustrating because I love sports and all the other schools are doing sports.
Time, time's up. Sorry. Thank you. Next up is Lauren Smith.
Hello, my name is Lauren Smith. I'm a mom of three and an ICU nurse. Forty-three days ago, I drove to work and I felt I surely wasn't the only one who was looking at gating criteria chosen for our district and saying, "We need to look at this with more than one number." You see, I'm an ICU nurse. If I looked at only one number about my patient in any given minute, my patient would die. I'm constantly looking at handfuls of numbers, vital signs, tube markings, dosages, using these numbers along with the total picture together to make conclusions about where my patient is in this moment and what I can do to help them. I worked, I wanted to help our kids move forward from this pandemic as our society should and I started a Facebook group for parents like me who want more than one number. What I found out quickly is that besides the gating criteria needing to be reexamined, there's a small group of teachers who have been working just as hard to keep our children out of school. The beautiful thing about social media is it's a source of community in times like these, but it's also a source of information I was shocked and saddened to see. Information that shows influential members of the union fear-mongering and posting things like, "Hey, Joko, your COVID's showing", with a screenshot of a photo of 12.7% positive case count. The tone comes off mocking and boastful as though she's proud of that number that supports her cause, which is what? What is the real goal of the union radical group who are trying to keep our kids out of school? And to that, to them I say, "How dare you? How dare you boast high numbers and pretend to care about the safety of my child when you're proudly posting photos of fake tombstones your group has placed next to signs wanting kids back in school? How dare you work so hard to try to rob every family in this district of making the choice that's best for their family, for their child? Instead, you waste the board's time working against us for your own selfish political motives." How dare you not allow all teachers to participate in surveys asking how safe teachers really feel and what they all want? If you represent all teachers as you say, they should have been included instead of their voices snuffed out because they don't align with your agenda. Most desperately want to be in school with our kids. And how dare you post on your NEA page, and I quote, "No student should have to sacrifice their health or safety in order to access great public education." I can promise you, health and safety is at risk for these kids daily and not at the hands of COVID-19, you say. It's the total picture we need to look at, just as it is in the ICU. These kids need help from adults who see the total picture with all of the numbers and more, who will work together to find a solution that works to do what's right for them, not a group who wants to play hardball with the board. This is not a game. It's not time to negotiate with boards of, with the board for ulterior motives like time working from home, childcare, or academic curriculum to fit your political agenda. It's time to continue to purposely cause, not time to continue to purposely cause unrest until the election with our children being held hostage while you do so. This selfish is unbelievable to me and I speak for countless other families when I say that we are fed up. We want the incredible, hard-working, loving, caring, brilliant teachers we have in our community who realize that they are essential to us. The numbers are low and they are flexible in their approach to make it work for our kids, full-time. We in medicine look at all of the numbers and much more and I just ask the board to be the same.
Thank you. Next up is Robert Stewart.
Thank you. My name is Rob Stewart. I have three kids in the Alatha school system. I was just looking at the numbers today. Well, earlier I was listening to other people speak. You know, and I have a heart for teachers, I have a heart for coaches, and I have a heart for kids, okay? I looked at the numbers of COVID since March.
I'll give you a few extra seconds, but do you mind putting your mask over your, over your nose? Thank you. I'll give you a few more seconds.
Yeah, thank you. Five more minutes? Thank you. Here we go. I coach kids, so I love kids. I like to listen to kids' hearts. And right now, today, the kids are pouring out their hearts to this district. So, since March, we've had 11,000 positives. Out of 600,000 people, that's not bad. We've had 486 in, in the hospital. That's not a big number out of 11,000. So I looked at further into that. Hundred twenty-four in the ICU. Zero to nine, zero deaths. Ten to nineteen, zero. Ten to twenty-nine, four. Thirty to thirty-nine, one. Fifty to fifty-nine, where I fall in, one. Fifty to fifty-nine, one death. I'm not too worried. Sixty to sixty-nine, eleven. So if you go to zero to seventy years old, we're looking at fifteen, sixteen, seventeen deaths since March. This is a big deal. Kids should be in school. I got a son that's going to go to the Army. He wants to quit school, get his GED, and be done with this crap. Excuse my language, but he, he's pissed off. I understand. They should be in school and I feel for the teachers, but the teachers need to see these numbers. Zero to sixty, your chances of dying are point zero, 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 two, is what I said here. Hundred eighty-four deaths in Johnson County. Doesn't make sense. So I asked some, some friends, I got a minute and a half left it looks like. So I asked some friends, "What do you think? What's your family saying? What are your kids saying?" And their heart being ripped out. She said, "This is very damaging. I have two teens that struggle with anxiety and depression and this is only making it worse. The isolation is far worse than the risk of dying from COVID." This woman says, "People, our freedom is seeping away. I'm going to wait till the end of my son's soccer season and then I'm going to war." Doesn't sound good. I am very angry at these people. I'm talking torches and pitchforks angry. The level of utter ignorance and the big picture is staggering, staggering. My son, who has accepted a scholarship already in college, has an appointment tomorrow with mental health professional for the same reason. My daughter, who's been a straight A student, told me she doesn't care about school anymore. Her depression is unreal. I, I got response from forty people. It breaks my heart. I know you're sitting there on the board and it's a tough decision. I know that. You've been put in a position you never expected and the teachers are going one way and the students... This mental health is a big deal. A big deal. She says, "I'm, I'm holding them accountable for live instruction." She can't get a hold of the counselor. She says, "I'm here in survival mode, mode as a parent. My relationship with them is very important. My kids have been absent from Zoom and, and, and they're not, not being able to log on."
Robert.
My kids don't even have a full class. It's ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. God bless each of you. I know it's hard, but we are all in this together, right? You have a heart.
And the last one, Julie Kellerman.
Good evening. My name is Julie Kellerman and I am the parent of a freshman and a junior attending Alatha West High School. I have been watching and listening to these board meetings since the summer. Initially, I was pleased with what I was hearing. You solicited feedback from students, parents, and teachers. You acknowledged that how things went in the spring was not good. You looked at both remote and in-person options with a more robust plan. You spoke of the mitigation procedures and processes that would take place. You sounded like you had a plan and were moving forward with that plan. Let me remind you that eighty percent of families had said they wanted in-person school. Even after enrollment took place, seventy-five percent of families said they wanted in-person school. Then two weeks before school started, this choice was taken away, using the gating criteria as the reason. I think we all know how flawed this gating criteria is. The governor recently allocated 59 million in funds to increase testing, knowing that Kansas is near the bottom in the U.S. as far as testing, therefore making our numbers unusually high. Just this week, the Spring Hill School District adopted a new gating criteria, one that uses the CDC and KDHD, a much more transparent method of monitoring what zone the district is in. I highly encourage you to do the same. Over the last several weeks, I've done a lot of research. I have listened to people in the community talk about how stressed their kids are, how many students are struggling to be organized, keep up, et cetera, because staring at a screen all day is draining. I have listened to my boys' teachers and can hear the stress in their voices. We have all heard about the increase in suicides, crisis calls, the mental health professionals being overwhelmed. With all this, I keep coming back to the question, "What is the objective? What will it take to give our kids what they need? How long are you willing to say one COVID death is too much, but not acknowledging that one suicide is too much? To say we should stay remote until there are no cases is unreasonable. This virus is here to stay and we must learn to live with it, just like we do all the other viruses out there. For the belief that this is the safest way to deal with the current situation, I would like to politely ask you to get a new profession. I do not want people that want to instill fear and unreasonable demands educating my children. To educate by definition means give intellectual, moral, and social instruction to someone, especially a child. Educate implies development of the mind. I would have to argue that this current mode of educating is missing the mark. Again, I ask, what is the objective here? The district has four strategic plan goals. High academic expectations for all. Every student will be challenged and supported through the tiers of instruction. Second, behavior, social, emotional development for all. Every student will benefit from educational experience that furthers their behavior, social, and emotional development. Three, human capital. You want the best teachers. Four, effective systems promoting and using resources that will help these other objectives. The district has core values. Integrity, vision, accountability, resilience, innovation.
Julie, your time, your time's up. I'm sorry. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So that was the last speaker. I would suggest another ten-minute comfort break unless people have an issue with that. Uh, maybe come back at eight-thirty, so eight-minute comfort break, according to my watch. And our next item is informational presentation reopening update 3.01. We'll go right into that.
Good evening. Thank you for a little bit of time to visit with you this afternoon. It's definitely not this afternoon anymore, is it? Thank you for a little bit of time to visit with you this evening to just give you some updates where some things are currently and also some updates about potential hybrid information for us to be looking at tonight as well. The first thing that I want to mention, you know, I had somebody mention to me today that a lot of what we're doing feels like learning musical chairs right now. And, you know, at first I kind of was like, ah, that's a really hard thing to hear. But the truth is that there's a lot of changes and a lot of things that we're doing differently based on things we're learning every single day from our students, our staff, our parents. As you well know, there's no handbook for what we're all doing right now. And, you know, the work that we're doing to try to help our students learn the very best they can is no different than anything else in the world. There is no handbook, and so we're basing decisions and making changes very quickly based on varieties of feedback from our stakeholders. And so I just want to say that we appreciate that. That's helping us tremendously as a system as we try to respond to supporting our system the very best we can. I wanted to give you a couple of quick updates about things I talked about last time. The first three bullets about things that have happened to try to support our students, our parents, and our staff, many of those things have happened. We had almost 2,000 parents attend one of five parent training sessions for Synergy, which is the learning management system. And those were parents that logged in and attended live with our staff to be walked through different elements of that. We've had another thousand or so who have watched the recorded times of those trainings as well. One of the things I'm really proud of, though, is during that time, we had someone manning kind of the Zoom chat, and we provided real-time answers to our parents as they asked them in those sessions, which is really critical to get that information out quickly to our parents as they're trying to support their kids in their current learning environment. I also talked about the help desk that we have with technology and learning services. We've had approximately 3,500 requests to the help desk, which is far more obviously than we've had in a typical year, but that is supporting not only our staff and our students, but also parents who have called us and said, we need help in supporting our students. And so we've done that as well. We've also had since the very first day of school an open Zoom link that's still open. It closed at 7:30 tonight, but it's been open, will be open again tomorrow morning, but it's been open every day as well. We've had a high of 280 educators in one day and a low of about 15. And that's a place where educators can pop in immediately, get help from someone on our team that hopefully can help them if they don't know the answers. There's a quick process to work to get our staff the help that they need. So I say that all to say that there is a part of it that does look a little bit like learning musical chairs from time to time right now, but the intent really is to try to be the best resource we can be, not only for our staff and our parents, but also our students, most importantly. I also want to say, and one of the speakers tonight alluded to some changes in things like Zoom and some of the practices and expectations that the districts have in place. Again, we started last May working with about 160 educators from our system to develop what our instructional plan was to start this school year. Since last May, we've learned a lot, and we've started educating kids since last May, and we've done that for several weeks now. And there's been tremendous feedback for us. So, for example, we had some pretty locked-down rules, if you will, about Zoom as we started the school year, and our teachers came to us and said, we need more flexibility. We need to be able to put kids in breakout groups so they can have conversation and those kinds of things. So just know, a lot of the changes that we're making are purely based on feedback to try to support our students and our educators across the system. The other thing that I would mention is, in all things that we're doing right now, we're learning a lot. And we're learning a lot ourselves, but we're also learning vast amounts from what school districts are doing across the country. In many ways, we are leading the way in some things, and in many ways, we're a little bit behind other districts in what they're trying, and that's really helpful for us. All of us in education typically get piles and piles of emails of research every single day that says, hey, look at this district in California. Here are the things that are working for them. Here are the things that aren't working for them. And those are the kinds of things that we're spending time looking at as we try to make plans and prepare our system for a successful school year. I did want to mention a little bit about the hybrid models that we're going to be looking at tonight. Clinton and Sarah will be the experts on that for you tonight. But there's a lot of complexity to our hybrid models and to any hybrid model. And one of the things that we've had lots of questions about is, why has that changed? And why is that morphed since you first shared information with us in May and June and July? And the reason is, we know better. We know better, and we've learned a lot from what other districts have tried around the country. There's some complexity involved with it. Food service, for example, wasn't designed for a hybrid model of education. So we have to figure out how it is we're going to provide food to students on a rotating basis. Our food service staff has done an amazing job with our elementary schools, but that gets more complex, obviously, as we think about adding middle school students and high school students in a condensed lunch period, for example. Transportation complexity, you know, obviously, one of the things we'll be talking tonight about is the hybrid model of middle and high school. That's a huge number of students, and so there's a lot of transportation intricacies that are part of that. So Sarah and Clint will talk a little bit more about those models. But I would also say that our elementary staff, they got to try some of this for us. As you may remember, they had an AA, kind of a win day in the middle, and a BB schedule, meaning students were there for two days, they had a day at home, and then the other group of students were there for two days. And so it looked like two days on and three days off for our students. What we learned is that was extremely challenging for most of our educators, extremely challenging to prepare quality instruction for kids to do for three days when they were at home, and they weren't with us for two days. So our elementary staff helped us learn. That's probably not the best model for us to look at in terms of our middle and high school instruction for our kids. So Sarah and Clint will talk a little bit more about what that could possibly look like. The other thing that is important to note, we have tried very hard since last spring to have our educators ready to toggle between learning environments, because, as you well know, the decisions we make tonight may have to be changed again at some point. I say we, the decisions you make tonight may have to be changed at some point, and our educators need to be best suited to be able to toggle between those environments. And so with that in mind, on September 25th, which was just, I think, last Friday, on September 25th, we spend time with our secondary educators talking about planning in a hybrid environment to hope to prepare our staff to be ready to be in that environment should we go that direction. So we spent some time with that. And all that to say that, is everything we're going to do moving forward going to be perfect? Are all of our teachers energized and ready to go with whatever the learning model is? Probably not. But what I want you to hear from me is, as a system, we're going to do everything we can to help our teachers be successful and our staff be successful, star students be successful. With that, I think Clint is going to talk about high schools first.
Dr. Yeager, before Mr. Albers and Dr. O get started, just a couple things to Brent's comments earlier. We expect change, and we need to change. Had we decided we were going to lock in exactly what we felt was best moving forward in June and not been responsive to the feedback from our teachers, from our parents, from our students, to me, that would be irresponsible. And it's going to mean, as we work through this, some changes, because we want to respond and make the changes that will help both our teachers and our students in the educational process. And that's not going to be different a month from now or two months from now. We need to adjust and make those changes in order to continue to improve. Just because we started one way does not mean we should finish that way as we look at how that'll move forward. As we talk about hybrid tonight, I think it's very important to talk about how this is not a decision and this is necessarily next step. This has to be part of our training progression. So to go back very quickly, when you think schools got shut down in March, we had to scramble and put together some type of education for our students during that time period. There isn't an educator in the state of Kansas that looked at that and said, that was perfect. It wasn't. But it is what we could do in the time we were given. Since that point in time, planning for this school year started back in March. And to put it in perspective, we had to find and adopt a learning management system. We had to implement that and get it to work with our student management components. We added almost 10,000 devices. We had over 3,000 staff members we needed to train, which is part of the reason is you all voted to push the start of school back so we could do that. And what we're having to do because of that training is we're really trying to stay just a little ahead of the curve that we may have to look at implementing at some point in time. So we started off with teachers and helping get them comfortable for remote. And as we saw with hybrid with elementary, we've learned some things through that process. And that's why we took advantage of the September 25th training, is to be able to start talking about what a hybrid might look like at secondary and to give teachers an opportunity to think through that process so that we can continue to get feedback and refinement and put what we need in place that if at some point in time that's what we need to do, we're better prepared to be able to make that shift. And when we look at the gating criteria later this evening, and I walk you through really four different gating formats, the one thing you're going to see on every single one of those is an option for hybrid at the secondary. So we'd have been remiss if we didn't take the opportunity to start the conversation, to begin to look at what that might look like if that's where we need to go moving forward. So a lot of emails, and I know you got them, decision's been made, all these types of things, that's not accurate. We took advantage of the date that was built into our calendar. We wanted to give our teachers an opportunity to process and give them some tools to think about and to also give us the time to get feedback and look at this. So this is, again, a process. Everything we're going to be doing, for the most part, throughout this entire year, I believe, under the pandemic, is going to be looking at what's the next step in the process? How do we best meet students' educational needs? And as we heard tonight, for some, remote's great. For others, it's not the educational choice. Some folks like the idea of a hybrid, some don't. And that's going to be the reality as we work through our continuum of the educational opportunities we're going to have to provide based on what's going on in our community and our society. So I felt it was important to make sure we reiterated that this evening as we talk about. And again, we're trying to educate our community as we've gotten feedback from our teachers from last week. We've even made changes from some of the original discussion we had with them. And I'm sure we will make more changes before a hybrid would ever be implemented based on the conversations and the feedback that we'll continue to have. But it was important to talk about what it might look like as we think about that as one step in a potential progression when we look at the gating criteria, which we'll go through and talk about some of the different gating criterias that are available now. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Albers.
Or Dr. Yeager for another quick second, because I forgot my last slide.
I cut you off. It's my fault.
No, I don't think it was your fault, Ms. Allison, but thank you for saying that. Just one other quick thing. We've had numerous questions, and I know you have as well, about should we go to a hybrid model? What will be the impact on our students whose parents chose remote learning from the beginning of the year on enrollment time? For our students in middle school, there will be very, very little impact. And one of the reasons for that is the way our middle school remote learning ended up being staff. Our students in the middle school level are served almost universally by teachers and educators out of their own buildings. And so it will be very easy for them to go with the same schedule that they've been on, because it's already built into their schedule. So that actually should help tremendously with the number of the concerns that I have heard. The other challenge for us a little bit, not necessarily a challenge, but something we expected when we went with offering remote learning, is at the high school level, at the high school level, there will be some challenges or some changes with remote learning and schedules. But some of the things that I've received on email, I can assure you, won't be the case, like several questions about if we would go to a hybrid model, will my student that's enrolled in high school, will they have all-new classes and all-new teachers and changes like that? And the answer to that question is absolutely no. For our high schools, in order for us to provide a remote learning opportunity for 2,200 kids, we had to utilize the vast amount of staff in our high schools. And so in order for us to provide as full of a schedule as we could for our high school students, there's many of our high school teachers that have a few sections of in-person, but also have a few sections of remote. And so in order for all those schedules to work, they all have to be on similar schedules. What I would say, and Clinton and Sarah will probably visit about this a little bit too, is we are still accountable for 360 minutes of educational time for students each day. And so Clint at the high school will tell you a little bit more about how that opportunity can work for students, because our desire is not to provide less to our remote students, and that's one of the concerns that has been brought forward. One of the other things that we have to be very careful about as a system right now is the pace of our instruction. You know, it's very likely that, again, as we look at second semester, we are going to have students whose families choose for them to go to a different learning environment, meaning the kids that were, families chose remote for the first part of the year could easily choose in-person for the second part of the year. And so we have to pay very conscious attention to where we are in terms of our instructional pace with our students, because we don't want to get one group so far ahead of another group of students, especially at high school, that should they come back, that we are in two vastly different places. And so that's a lot of work that we've done and trying to keep everyone focused on that too. And you've heard us talk a lot about priority standards, and that's, again, something we continue to talk to all our educators about, is this year, the best place for us to land is what are those things we know our students need to be successful? And those have been articulated in a number of ways. But those are things we're paying really close attention for, again, as we have students moving between learning environments, those instructional models. Mr. Albers?
Thank you for allowing me a few minutes here to talk through the hybrid model that's being discussed and talked about for our high school level. Several weeks back, when we first started looking at the possibility that a decision may be made at some point to move to a hybrid model, high school principals met with their building leadership teams or their department chairs or their teachers, stakeholder groups, to kind of gather some feedback on, obviously, the hybrid model that the elementary used, the pros and cons of that, and to look at maybe some other hybrid models and what may be work better, because as Dr. Yeager alluded to, we learned a lot of things from the hybrid model being used at the elementary level for those weeks prior. Obviously, the purpose of a hybrid model at any level is to limit the number of students in the building at the same time. For us, grade nine to 12 would be divided by last name into an alpha distribution of roughly A through L and M through Z. I say roughly because, obviously, each building has a unique alpha distribution, and there may be some variation by building to make sure those two groups are as even as possible when they try to even out those classes, class sizes. Also, you know, acknowledging, we certainly realize that all hybrid models have advantages and challenges, and there is no perfect hybrid schedule. As we look at the high school hybrid model further, based on the input of the high school principals as we met with them and then the feedback that they gathered, if the decision is made to move to a hybrid model of attendance, the preferred hybrid model, when we looked at all those challenges and advantages with the AM PM hybrid model. Dr. Yeager talked a little bit about remote learners and how that may affect them. Remote learners would follow the same bell schedule, class schedule to allow for that sharing of staff. Again, that sharing of staff had happened to be able to offer the breadth of courses at the remote level also, because there's only so many AP physics teachers to go around. And to be able to offer some of those classes remotely, we had to share them, both remote and in-person learning. Curriculum pacing and facilitate, again, as Dr. Jaeger mentioned, that smooth transition. If a student were to switch learning environments at semester, any time through the semester for any reason, to make sure that they're in at least a similar spot to be able to facilitate that transition. Hybrid models, obviously, daily in-person attendance for all students creates that, addresses concerns about screen time, some of which you've heard, and then also allows for safety measures for mitigation with the fewer students in the building. Those are all things that are accomplished with the hybrid model. Going back to remote learners a little bit, although they would need to follow that same bell schedule as the in-person students do the staff sharing piece, how the time is used during those periods may look differently than in-person because obviously there's not the need to reduce the number of students in class in a remote environment due to safety reasons. So that time would look different for remote learners than in-person learners.
Are you saying there'd be more remote classroom students per teacher when you say that looks different? I'm trying to make sure I understand.
Well, the remote class, say it has 28 students in it right now, there's not the need to split those into two separate classes and four.
Okay, okay.
So it would remain that same class as Dr. Jaeger pointed out, wouldn't change teachers or anything like that. And so in this schedule, as you see, it maintains, and this will help kind of explain it a little bit, it maintains that odd block, even block structure that we currently have for both our in-person and remote learners. But it does split the two groups into a morning group, AM group, and PM group by getting that rough alpha distribution. On an odd block day, for example, the AM group would come in and they would have their first third, fifth, seventh hour, their odd block. There would be that transition to the PM group in the middle of the day, grab and go lunches. And then the PM group would come in after that transition and go through their first third, fifth, seventh hours. What that may look like for remote learners, obviously, they may attend their first hour math class in the morning where much of that direct instruction takes place. And then they may come back to that first hour in the afternoon where much of that application or guided practice or get help from teachers, those types of things would happen to the remote learners. Then the next day would be an even block. Again, the AM group would come in, do their second hour advisory seminar, have that period fourth and sixth. Again, that transition period for the PM group, the grab and go lunch is available again. And then the PM group comes in and goes through their second hour advisory seminar, fourth period, and then sixth hour to round out the day. Again, we said that, certainly acknowledge that there are no perfect hybrid models. Some of the challenges and advantages of this model and why eventually the high school principals kind of arrived, if we were going to a hybrid, this would be the best overall model because of some of the advantages. It obviously allows for in-person instruction while reducing the number of students in attendance at one time because those safety measures for mitigation can take place. Obviously, having them in-person, spend, parent support are more easily accessible. Under this model, students are in the building every day. And that's important. And that was something that was very attractive to them because students are in the building every day, even if for only half the day, they have access to obviously their teachers, trusted adults, counselors, lunch, and those support services on a daily basis. So it's every student, every day in the building. They have access to those support services such as social emotional support, those types of things they would have that daily access to. Students would see teachers every day in person and see their individual teacher. So for example, their math teacher, two to three times per week. Obviously, it would be three times one week and then two the next and continue rotating like that. They would see their individual, whether it be math teacher or English teacher on that rotation. A very important part of this was allows for those grab and go lunches during the morning transition, thus eliminating the large groups of students eating in common spaces when obviously social distancing and masking may be problematic. And it also allows that daily access in building to lunch for those students that need it and want it. It allows for hands-on labs and other activities that may not be possible via remote instruction. I think the speaker alluded to that. And then also in-person academic assistance for students, both in class, when they're attending class, and then every other day, obviously, they would have that seminar period where academic assistance would be available in person as well. Clubs and activities would be able to meet in person. Then also just that access to equipment and learning materials in building is an advantage. Certainly doesn't go without its challenges. The teacher access with the shorter class periods will involve some independent learning activities to complete it on that, be completed on that LMS when not in attendance in person. What Dr. Jaeger alluded to as well, that pacing of curriculum and instructional planning, it would be something to work through. They started talking about that and training teachers on that during the PD last Friday to talk about how that might look like and how to structure that planning and pacing of curriculum. And then obviously, the transportation with that midday switch out of groups is something that would be a challenge. That gives a brief overview of the model and a kind of a schedule what that might look like. I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions I can about that model and expand on anything I need to.
I've got one quick question. You said this was the best hybrid model compared to what?
So obviously, the hybrid model that the elementary used, where it was the AA and then Ivory One remote on Wednesday and then BB. The shortcomings of that model, obviously, we learned a lot when elementary did it. And when high school principals, when we talked about that, obviously, it would be in-person one day a week for those kids, obviously, because that A group would come Monday and Tuesday. They would see their math teacher one day per week in that model. And so this allows more touches per se, per week for each individual class. And the AM PM model allows them to be in the building every day because they did look, we did look at the AB model also. And the problem, one of the issues with that, if you stay in a full block format with 90-minute blocks and you were to run, if you sketch it out, A odd, A odd, even if you go B odd, A even, B even, when you sketch that out over four weeks, you would only see, let's for example, your math teacher once per week, three out of a four-week rotation, and then that fourth week, you would see them twice. In this model, again, it's a minimum of two per week and then every other week, it's three per week that you would see your math teacher. So that more frequent meetings with each individual teacher and then again, the, just the presence in the building each day, being around adults.
Mr. Albers, how does, for instance, in, you talked about the ability to potentially meet with activities or some of the activities in clubs and some of the social emotional meetings that they might have with counselors. How does that get done in this tight timeframe? I mean, would we allow some of those kids to stick around through the transition time? Would some things get scheduled in the afternoon? How does that work? Or is that, did I misunderstand that?
No, I think any of those things are possible. Ultimately, even when we were in school normally last year, if a kid needed a set account, a lot of times it was out of their class because it was maybe an immediate need. And there wasn't a designated time for, to meet with counselor or some of those things. It was by need. And now the seminar period, obviously, that was a time that gave a lot of access to counseling services and some of those support services that students needed. And the seminar advisory period is still in effect here every other day for all students. So they would have that time where they wouldn't have to miss any class time to receive those services.
And how about the, a couple of comments that were made about the, I mean, essentially, we're cutting in half their class time essentially for the, and I'll speak specifically to some of the AP classes that were, that was mentioned in. Is there a minimum requirement for them to sit? How do we make that up? Or is there, or is this adequate for that? What's, how was that discussed or taken by the AP teachers?
Well, ultimately, any hybrid model would have the same issue because whether it's AB or anything, because if we bring all kids there, because that was, and let me go back to the AB, to be able to do that at the high school level, we would have to do a seven period day. Because if we kept the AB blocks, obviously, it runs into the issue of not seeing that individual teacher but once per week. So you do the seven period day. And even in that model, obviously, they'd be in school one day and then not at all the next day. So the same issue, the direct instruction, those lessons would be taught during that initial in-person. And then whether it be group work, independent practice, guided practice, anything that needed to happen would happen in that, the afternoon in the AMP model or the next day in the AB model. So as far as minutes, it'd be challenging, especially for the AP courses, to get that content in. It would have to be structured differently, certainly, and would certainly be challenging.
But is there a minimum requirement of minutes that they have to have? Is that just their own preference as far as what the teachers think the time needs to get to get to that point? I mean, is there a minimum that we're going to leave the kids out on?
Right. There's not a minimum requirement of minutes for AP courses. It's an amount of curriculum that they need to cover, obviously, to be ready for those AP tests. So it's not minutes necessarily, it's the ability to cover that amount of curriculum and get ready for the AP test.
Thank you.
And so the grab and go lunches, are they in bags? And so the hot lunch is a thing of the past?
I know Food Services is working on that. I don't know if Dr. McMullin will want to talk about that, but it's my understanding those would be prepackaged, obviously, to create that ability to grab and go. I don't know if any of those would be hot lunches or whether they're, okay.
The intent right now is they'd be grab and go, they'd be boxed up or bagged. We can do a serving line for incoming students that are in the PM. Quite honestly, we anticipate a real reduction in the number of students that stay to eat that, you know, most high schoolers are probably going to run out the door. However, it's free right now. So we're trying, it's going to be a real balancing act to figure out, are they just going to grab the bag hoping there's some chips in there and run out with it? Or are they just going to stay over time, ignore it? So it's going to take some time to adjust those food levels.
Okay, thank you.
Could I ask a quick question about the cleaning of the building? Because as we talked, I know when we started hybrid for elementary, one of the thoughts was that that Wednesday day that gives us, I tried to catch you, I'm still up there, gives us that time to do that. If we're going to have students in, is there concern about that or can that just done at night?
It can be done at night. We found it, we move a lot quicker. We've learned how to use the equipment much faster. And by the way, high schools have a lot more custodians at their disposal, so to speak. So we don't anticipate having a problem getting room at the night during the night.
Thank you.
Can I get maybe one thing too? The other thing that was discussed was even on Wednesdays with staff in the rooms, they really couldn't thoroughly clean the rooms until staff were gone for the day also. So most of the cleaning was taking place at night anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Did anybody like the hybrid model when you trained them on it?
Did anyone like the hybrid model?
Any of the staff? I mean, was anybody excited about this change? Read it and weep, baby. It is what it is.
You know, the answer is it's mixed, just like everything we're doing right now. You know, there are certainly staff members who have said, "Gosh, this is a better response than, you know, what we've seen other places tried or what we tried maybe at the elementary level." Some of them, that's even based on their experience with their own kids in our system and that kind of thing. So like everything, it's mixed. You know, I think we have staff members who can easily wrap their head around trying to plan and prepare, kind of as Clint was talking about, in a different way to utilize this time. But again, it will take some toggling and some adjusting for our staff members. So, you know, I think by and large, our staff is stressed right now and, you know, working really hard to meet the mark of our students and our community and what have you. But I have no doubt that they won't rise to the challenge of, you know, we end up in this place. So that's a long way of saying it's mixed. It really is. And that's pretty consistent with most things we're doing right now.
Thank you.
And I think I would echo that, just in some of the feedback from the high school principals, I think they shared that some staff are concerned about being able to get through all the curriculum for any hybrid model. And then some that kind of fits what they're doing now in a 90-minute block where they have maybe half the period of direct instruction and then they turn kids loose on group work and projects for the other half. So some said, "That's kind of what I'm doing already." But then on the other side of it, again, as Dr. Jaeger said, very mixed because some are very concerned about getting through all of their curriculum.
Thank you.
Can you talk a little bit about transportation in this model?
Transportation in this model, obviously, there's a midday drop-off and pickup. We've explored that with our bus company. It does come at an additional cost. There are some ways to help alleviate that cost if we were to look at transporting middle schoolers and high schoolers together. That makes the routes much more efficient. There is enough time, it's going to get a little tight at the end of the day, to deliver middle schoolers and get to the high school to do it and, or vice versa, if they're not right together. We haven't quite solidified the plans, but you have to staff up that middle of the day. So far, they have, there are enough drivers that don't have a second job during the middle of the day. They have pulled their drivers and they could staff it. The concern would be if drivers start to have absentee rate rise up, that could become a little bit of a challenge. But right now, the plans, they do have enough length to do.
We had a few parents email about maybe needing to change transportation because of that midday. Would that be an option that we could explore?
It is an option.
Okay.
What's that estimated additional cost on that transportation piece?
If we run them separately, $75,000 a month because you're basically playing a midday chart. It's like, think of it as a giant field trip because all the other routes are gone. If we can combine the middle school and high school students together, it's $25,000. You save about 12 routes overall.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I do have a question. And it may just not be feasible, but I'm wondering if there's, if there's any model where we use technology to incorporate remote learners and in-person in-classroom teaching simultaneously and whether or not that was explored as a potential hybrid model?
So almost zooming kids in to the classroom. That was talked about. There was some concern from high school principals and some of their staff about managing those two modes at the same time. If I've got 15 kids in person and 15 kids on Zoom. Some of the concern was obviously without external cameras mounted in the classrooms, they're using their laptop as the camera, which obviously then they can't use for much else. And they have to stay stationary too. And audio, those type of technical challenges. But I think some teachers would want that. And some said they wanted it. At the same time, some said, "I don't want that at all because I don't want to try and teach my 15 in-person, my 15 in-person and have 12 or 13 more zooming in that I've got to try and make sure are still on task and do what they need to do."
Thank you.
I've had several parents mention what a challenge Zoom is for their child who's shy or has anxiety because it's so obvious who's asking the question. You know, your face pops up. And are we doing any accommodations for that? Like, can they type in questions? Or can we do some training that lets the teacher know when a student's struggling in that manner?
Yeah, there's the ability of Zoom to chat individually with a teacher or I think some of the students have obviously been emailing questions.
Yeah, really, what we recommend is that students be able to private chat with their teacher. So in Zoom, you can send a message individually to your teacher. On our Learning Services website, our tech training, we have a number of videos of training related to Zoom and best practices with Zoom and trying to account for some of those.
I would also say that you've got students that, you know, teachers feel have been more comfortable asking questions, more so than raising their hand in class or those types of things. So as we know, the learning modality is going to be more positive for some, say, remote, and others it wouldn't be. But that was a concern, I think, that a lot of our teachers expressed at first. And several that I've talked to have less concern about that and have even felt like some of their students, it's been, they've been more willing to participate remotely than they did in the classroom, so.
Good. As long as teachers are aware that that's an issue and will, you know, be mindful of it, that would be wonderful.
I had a quick question. Does this change, like, how's this work with like, some of the... Like, how's this work with like some of the, I'll call it CBR or special ed? Does it change anything from what they're doing now? Or I think we have some of them coming in, I think currently right now into some of the buildings. Does this change that at all or will it disrupt their day at all?
So the hope is that it wouldn't disrupt their day. You know, again, our students who are receiving special education support through our CBR and Aunt Jeanette's going to pop up if I say anything wrong or she wants to add anything here. But our students who are enrolled in our CBR programs or our programs that serve students with autism, those are really based on their IEPs and the decisions that are made to support them. So if we would have a learning model that impacted them, their team would get together, work on their temporary learning plan and make a plan for them that supported their needs in school as well. So there may be some of that if we would go with a hybrid model that needs to take place. But again, the students that are in some of our specialized programs, they should be having those ongoing conversations with their case managers that are responsible for their IEP goals and their learning plans to get that back in place to make sure that there's not an undue impact on any of those students.
Thank you.
I think Dr. Jaeger has sat long enough with us and we've had these conversations that he's clearly able to articulate how things are looking. But the only addition that I would have to that is I think what we have when we have a hybrid schedule and we have peers in the building and we have more opportunities for learning to occur for some of these students, that will only find that they will be increasing their amount of time in the classrooms. So that's my addition.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yep, that's great. Thank you.
And I would say the same thing also for English language learners. Many of our English language learners, especially those that are very new to the English language, the remote environment is a challenge for students in that situation. Mike Blenthrope, who oversees our ELL program, has been working with the high schools this week to begin bringing some high school students in as early as next week to try to be supporting our students that way as well. But similar in many ways to our students that have IEPs in terms of...
Can you make a quick clarification? The joys of live streaming, Mr. Kangery just let me know that actually the grab and go has a hot entree in it, so.
Thank you. And hey, is that Patrick Mahomes on your mouse?
Anything else to bring? Thank you.
So if he has Patrick Mahomes on his, I'm going to ask him the next time, wear a Whataburger.
There you go.
Because I'm the Texas girl. So good evening and thanks for allowing us to share our hybrid model that we are proposing for the middle school, should we have to go that route. So in developing or deciding on a hybrid model for the middle school and obviously learning from the challenges with our elementary model, we gathered some input, number one, from our building principals, educators, and of course, our feedback from parents. But also, we looked at a number of models and we evaluated those. I know Mr. McKeon asked earlier, compared to what? When we look at compared to what, we looked at models that we discussed with other districts. We looked at other models outside of the state. And then in addition to that, in visiting with our educators and asking them what's working and what's not working, and we obviously heard loud and clear that the elementary hybrid model did not work. So knowing that, that's where we arrived with the decision of if we have to go this route, what's the best model for our middle school students? So moving to a hybrid model is obviously supported by the feedback we received specifically related to in-person contact with students, the social distancing that we have to be aware of with our lunch, and then of course, our transportation, as you've heard. So what is the model that we decided on for the middle school? It's what we're looking at, and it's again, not decided on, but what we're looking at should that we have to go to that route, is an AB hybrid model. I do want to reiterate that this would be the proposed model for our in-person students only. Our remote students would not be impacted. They would continue with that consistency that they've been doing. As you heard Dr. Jaeger say earlier, we're able to do that with the middle school because of the schedule that we followed. One of the main things that we heard from our parents at the beginning was when there was a concern is are we going to be sharing teachers across the district due to staffing? We were waiting to see what our data showed and what our enrollment number showed. By continuing with the seven-hour period that we did, we were able to keep our students, our middle school students, in contact and in their building. So the majority, about 85%, 90%, specifically their core classes are in their home school. So that's how we were able to do that. By moving to the AB hybrid model for our in-person students, we were able to accomplish that as well and our teachers would have, could potentially teach remote and in-person hour by hour. So obviously, for in the in-person environment, you heard Mr. Albert say earlier, what that means is we want to limit the amount of students that we have in the building. And so roughly dividing them into two groups, an A group and a B group by alphabet, first half, second half, and it could vary by building. Do you want to make sure that we point out that also, our goal is to keep families together? So if we have a unique, justifiable reason and they need to be moved to the group, they can work with our individual buildings on that. And again, it could vary. We put A through L and through Z, but depending on the building and how it falls, we'll determine if they're in the A or B group from there. So what does this look like? I just wanted to put a visual up there so you can see what we're talking about. So we're looking at an AB, AB group rotating every other day. So if you're in the A group, you would come one day, B group the next. Essentially, what that means is one day, if you're in the A week, you would be there three days that week. If you're in the B group, it would rotate from there. Now, by following the seven-period schedule, it will allow us to be able to, again, continue with what we have been doing. So when that time comes that we get to transition into full in-person, this would allow us to be ready and easily transition in our students because they're used to that schedule already and it's what we've been doing all this time. When students are not at work, we also heard, we are still responsible for that 360-minute instructional time. So while they're not onsite, our students will still have daily check-in with their teacher and they will work on independent learning activities. They could come into the teacher, check in with a teacher, and then they go, just like if they were in a classroom. If they could work on their independent practice, the teacher could provide a flipped lesson, any of the learning activities that they would do on those... On the days that they're not onsite. I do also need to point out that Santa Fe Trail has a unique, as we know, our redesigned schedule. And to date, they have been following that and they will continue to follow that. They will be on their own schedule. But just like they've done all along, that communication will come from their building principal and they are aware of that as well. Parents are already aware of that. So just to wrap things up, first, I think we want to commend our students, our teachers, and our community for our resiliency. We know it hasn't been easy. It hasn't been easy for anybody and it's not something that we all thought, hey, this is where we'd be. I can tell you right now, this is my first year transitioning into this position and there's times that it's like, wow, you know, what else can I say? Your question earlier was, will your teachers like this hybrid model? You know, in talking to 22 teachers and visiting classrooms for the last two weeks, to be honest, they'd like either or. But they did say, if we have to go into a hybrid, we prefer this model. So despite whatever mode we're in, we have no doubt that our teachers are going to rise to the occasion. You heard them tonight and we hear it all the time. They are tired and they are frustrated. But we truly believe in our hearts that we have the best teachers in Aletha and despite whatever mode we're in, we truly believe that they're going to continue with that same passion and that same commitment for our teacher, for our students. I know they will. And while no model is perfect and nothing is ideal as in-person, we do believe that this is the model that's going to allow us more in-person contact for our students. And I know that's something that our parents have been asking for. Any questions?
I was going to ask if you're... You mentioned that the elementary just did not work. How much of that do you think was related to just the age of the kids having to take care of all that versus was it that they just really didn't like the two days on, three days off? I mean, from feedback perspective? Because I mean, I can't imagine having a first grader trying to do remote learning. I mean, it's...
So there was two things that they've shared consistently, our teachers have and our parents, is number one, you're going a lot of days without seeing your kids. If I go every other day, I see my student, I can still check in, remind them what we're doing, what's the independent practice, but I know I'm going to see them the next day. The other piece that was challenging was your question earlier, Kristin, is there the ability to remote in or to zoom in while we're trying to run the class? That was a challenge because we know, especially now, that classroom management piece, you're trying to manage your kids coming into your classroom, getting them set up while still trying to log your students in and Zoom and is this one coming in? As much as we help our kids, we know that it's a challenge specifically for elementary to remember which button to click. And so they're trying to do that and manage what's going in. So those were the two challenges that they have shared consistently in all the discussions that I've had with our teachers.
So we heard from a few teachers tonight that the social distancing, that inches are... That desks are inches apart. Is that the case in middle schools and high schools?
So in middle school, the majority of our buildings, which all similar layouts. And obviously, knowing from Semit Trail, our classrooms are slightly bigger than the middle school. With the hybrid model, obviously, it would allow us to social distance a lot more. But if we were... If the decision is we go in-person, obviously, we would make it work. Would it be a challenge? Yes, it would because we could look anywhere from 26 to 28 students in a classroom. Some classes could be 20. But is it doable? To be honest, I have so much faith in our teachers that I think they will make anything doable.
How about, you know, I love our teachers and I want more than doable and I appreciate the resiliency and accommodations of the pandemic. But for them, when we say, you know, up to six feet is the preference and then, you know, three might work, I mean, it feels, you know, like everything else does in this. And so could you give me an approximate, like if we went full in-person, how far apart the desk would be so that we, as a board, would understand that?
Up three feet, would you say?
I visited a few elementary classrooms trying to help out teachers and one teacher had 25 in the class and it's difficult that there's a second desk for a student-teacher. Yes, they're inches apart, bodies are three feet, and I know that all the gating criteria is talked about six feet except for elementary. They talk about three. But will be a challenge and that's why we talk about the maximum extent possible, whether or not we spread out a little bit or move around. As they get older, you have a little bit of option for movement. It's harder to contain the elementary. That's why it's helpful that I've been given in the new criteria today, they actually reference for them. But it will be a challenge. Secondary schools will be a challenge.
Which is why you see in each of the gating criteria, a hybrid suggestion is it's really the only way you're able to social distance in so many of the common areas. In elementary, passing periods are not the same as they would be in high school or in elementary. When you're looking at lunch, you know, and you're trying to serve 2,000 high school students lunch, there's not enough available space to be able to do that and socially distance. So as you look at the documentation and why, instructionally, knowing that they're... That hybrid has some pros and some cons in that, to be able to social distance, that's about the only way you can do it.
Okay.
You know, our schools were designed for efficiency, not social distancing. So when you look at being able to move as many students as you can through hallways and the size of cafeterias and those types of things, we're all designed to move students through those areas as quickly as possible and utilize that space. And that's not what social distancing is asking us to do. So that's why the discussion you see particularly for secondary around hybrid is to be able to do exactly that. It's really when you think of the number of kids in the square footage that's available, the only way you can do it.
Thank you.
Dr. Guerrero, could you just tell me a little bit, like the... With the ABAB format, on that day that they're not in school, you mentioned a lot of different things, the daily check-in and all that. Can you just kind of like, maybe a little more specific, like what's that look like for my seventh grader? Does he get on Zoom at 7:45 once and then he's done for the day? Can you just tell me a little bit what that off day looks like, please?
Sure. And then I'm also going to have Dr. Jaeger help me out in just a bit, just to make sure that I don't miss anything. But what it would mean is if I'm on a B day, we're on an A day and I'm a B group student, I would check in with my academic extension teacher that morning, check in, make sure that they understand, look at their agenda, whatever it may be, this is what the assignment is, should you need me. Obviously, that teacher is still teaching their in-person students on that day, but that doesn't mean that they're not available. Remember, our middle school teachers have a team and a planned time. So if that student needed that opportunity to send an email or a question for that teacher, they could be able to do that and the teacher would be able to respond during that time. So to answer your question, what it would mean would be yes, they would check in at some point during that day and typically it would be during that academic extension time.
The only thing I would add is when our training last week, we talked a lot with our middle school staff and we did a training specifically for middle, a training specifically for high, and we talked about planning in two-day chunks. So it wouldn't be that I'd be at school for... On the A day and home for the B day and my learning wouldn't be connected. So we talked a lot about when you're planning for a middle school hybrid environment or an A student, plan on 45 minutes here today and that same amount of time tomorrow in terms of a learning chunk, so it's connected. And the hopes that, you know, when I'm on in-person with my teacher, the next day when I'm at home, it's not just, you know, worksheets and trying to keep me busy doing something that day, that it's really looking at those two days together, one in school, one at home, in terms of a planning chunk during that time. And honestly, that was one of the things our elementary teachers tried really, really hard to do and did a great job at, but was hard with the young kids is to have them there for two days and then plan for three days for them not to be back at school. And that's why in both the models, the more consistent contact is really helpful because I can teach kids today, they can do some work at home tomorrow, and then the very next day I can check in, how did it go? I can do some assessing, what do we need to do to support where you are, that kind of piece. So I don't know if that helps, Mr. Geary.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Moving along to our action consent items. If no one has any questions, I would look for a motion. Move to approve items 4.01 through 4.07 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wickliffe, second by Mr. McKeon.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Ms. Wickliffe?
Yes.
All right. And now on to action bids, contracts, agreements. Does anyone have any questions that they'd like to ask regarding these five items? If not, I would look for...
I might just ask about 5.01. The relationship that we have with this group, has our legislative committee, I know you guys have been extremely busy talking about doing other things, but have we met who's on that legislative committee?
We haven't met.
Okay.
Typically, when we get into November is when we'd start to work on the legislative platform for the committee.
Well, I understand your place has been full, so it's curious to know. I would move to approve action items 5.01 through 5.05.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeon, a second by Ms. Schultz, I think it was?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
All right. And now we are on to action other, and I believe Mr. Allison's going to give us a review of gating criteria.
Thank you, sir. As we, as we start this conversation, I do think it's important that we go back and, and think a little bit about where, where this all started. You know, a year ago, if you had mentioned gating criteria, folks would have looked at you and wondered if you were talking about your backyard fence or what that might be. It wasn't a common term any of us used. And the reason that the gating criteria has been established is the question we all got asked starting in March and throughout then the summer is how do we know when and if it's safe to reopen our schools? And that was something that none of us had the expertise to be able to make that answer. We could, you know, make suppositions, whatever that, that might look like. And those conversations, particularly with the Johnson County Health Department and the Kansas Department of Health, started back in, I would say, April, trying to answer this question. And the answer we got was we don't know yet. We're learning about this virus. We need to see what the, what data is there, and we need some time to be able to develop this. So that, you know, our doctors, our immunologists, our epidemiologists could, could look at what they were seeing and to be able to help us answer that question. So to just remind you of some dates, Johnson County Department of Health released their gating criteria on 7/29. Again, today at about 4:30, they released an update. And that's not unexpected in, little bit of a surprise on its release today, but not unexpected that we would see gating criterias evolve. And that was something that was very important just as we're evolving in the ways we have to approach based on feedback and information. Same thing with the science and those folks that take a look at it. You adopted the county gating criteria on 8/6. The Kansas Department of Health released gating criteria on 8/11. And that's also, you'll see it referred to as the KSDE. It was included as part then of the navigating change component. MARK, which is the Mid-America Regional Council, so that represents about seven counties, also put forth some gating criteria. And their rationale is that they hope that maybe both Kansas and Missouri school districts, because we share state line and there's so much commonality in transition back and forth, that it might help provide some additional guidance. And you'll also notice that they have just recently updated their gating criteria as well. And then on 9/15, so a little, little late to the game, where the CDC finally released some, some gating criteria. They'd given direction to schools, but had not really put it in, in that type of format. So these are the examples I'm going to go through this evening and explain. There's more in common than oftentimes there is being dissimilar, but there are, there are differences between them. And the reason that we're going to take a look at these, these all have a solid basis in their development, that they were developed not only with medical professionals. So you see Children's Mercy has been engaged in almost every one of these. You see the University of Kansas Medical Center, the Mid-American Pediatrics Association. You see a long list of individuals that have provided input in their development, those individuals that have the expertise that we do not. So let's, let's walk through these. I'm going to follow the same format for each of them. And some of the data slides I'll move through fairly quickly because it's, it's not about the data that you're seeing on the slide. None of the data is from today. It's been taken at different periods, but it's to give you an idea of what's the visual look like when we go to look at the data that's, that's in each of these gating criteria. So the original adopted gating criteria that we use from Johnson County Department of Health and Environment, which was, as we saw on the continuum, the very first, that was made available for schools, really looked at three data points, but two of them being closely tied together. The previous 14 days positive tests and steady or decreasing new cases, and then looking at what the one-week cumulative incident rate would be for new cases per 100,000 people. This is where you see differences as we walk through each of these that I'll try to point out. In some cases, it's around the snapshot, is it 14 days, two weeks, is it one week? In some cases, like around the, how the positive tests are determined and even to a degree of what tests are included and how often are repeat tests included. And that's the biggest difference between the KDHE gating criteria and what we see when we, when we look at the Johnson County. So this was the, the original criteria that, that we looked at and adopted. County put together on their website, a fairly straightforward. So when you go to their COVID dashboard, you go to the gating criteria, and it's probably the simplest to take a look at, and they've got the, the three measures right there. And then you can scroll down and, and move across and see what the lines look like for each of those, of those three areas. So it's, it's fairly easy to access. The percent positive test difference with Johnson County, they are counting PCR tests. They are not counting duplicate tests for what they call surveillance testing. So if I'm a medical professional or my job requires that I am tested every week, I will be counted the first time, but not every single time after that test. Now, if I've been negative, 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 and I'm positive, then, then it's included, but they're not counting those, those repeats. They are also not counting the antibody tests as, as part of their calculations. On the cases per 100,000, Johnson County looked at seven days. And then on the, the trend, they did a line of regression. So they statistically looked out over to see where, where that line changed. It's in the positive tests and the trends that we see some of the differences between each of these gating criteria. So based on the data that they are projected out, then you looked at what was the positivity, and then was it steady or decreasing in new cases, and then green, yellow, red, and remote only. So as you looked at those numbers, then they made recommendations for elementary, middle, and high school. You will see in every one of the gating criteria, the recommendation and why they broke it out between elementary and secondary is because of the data that they have regarding COVID. The younger students don't seem to contract COVID and they don't seem to be spreaders when they, when they do contract. As you progress in age, that begins to change. And that's why you see in every one of the gating criteria, there's a differentiation between the age groups. So what was announced today is what I'm going to refer to as, as the revised criteria. So let's, let's take a look at that. They start off with the, the primary is that incident rate, that's new cases per 100,000. But you'll see the change here. It was previously over a seven-day time period, it's now over the prior two weeks. So that is, that, that is a change that they made as they looked at incident rates. The percent positive over two weeks has, has not changed. And then they talk about some modifying variables. And it's, are you participating in activities, athletics, co-curricular? Because that's, that's going to be a little higher risk. So as, as you look at how the, the next chart looks, what, what's your ability to mitigate? And when we get to the CDC, you'll see that a number of the others have adopted part of what the CDC has recently recommended, and that's the caveat on how well is a school district able to meet five mitigation strategies or proposals. So if you're able to do that in all five consistently, as you'll see in that chart, but you're, you're also seeing that being now modeled after the CDC guidance with a number of these gating. Johnson County has, has included those considerations. When you look at the, at the trend lines, what is that showing you? So if you, if you're in, say, the orange category, but your trend line over the last couple of weeks is continuing to slowly decline, that may give you some, some leeway in which to factor all those other mitigating aspects into your decision-making. So if you'll remember, in the original, it was green, yellow, red, remote. They have now changed to green, yellow, orange, and red, and you see the lowest risk to highest risk. That is also something that you'll see in the CDC model. So trying to create some consistency between language. So as you would look at the new criteria, you look at the incident rate over the prior two weeks, you would determine how many new cases you've had for 100,000, and then you would determine where you are. Then you'd look at the percent positive over the previous two weeks, and then again, the recommendations that you see at the bottom. The, the biggest difference would be some of the, the changes in how they've approached at the middle school, high school, looking at the hybrid model. So previously, hybrid was only yellow, but they have adapted and based on, on some of the research and things that they've seen across the country, they now believe in that, that orange category, that, that hybrid would be appropriate for secondary. So again, each of these have continued to evolve moving forward. Any questions over the differences? You see some, it's not a stark difference, but.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Can I ask a quick question?
Uh huh.
So the, the incidence rate was not included on the one we adopted originally, correct? It's part of the, it was something that they mentioned is on their gating criteria, but was not part of the.
It was, it was originally part of.
But not part of this chart?
Not part of the chart, correct.
Correct.
So it's that third data point, but was not part of the chart.
Great. Thank you.
Correct.
Thanks.
All right. So let's look at the KDHE and you'll also hear it referred to the Kansas Department of Education. And that's a, that's a key distinction. It was not the Department of Education that created this. It was by a group of, of medical experts and epidemiologists along with the Kansas Department of Health and Environment that came up with the recommendation that then was added to help school districts across the state in the navigating change. So this is definitely based on medical expertise. So the first element of the KDHE gating criteria is around district-wide absenteeism. And the idea is not to include optional remote students, but is to look at the comparison from last year at that same time to this year to see what impact is COVID and, and other illnesses, for that matter, having on our, our student absentee rates. So as you see in the chart, the idea is to make that comparison, and then depending on what type of difference you see, that gives you a very localized ability to look at the data. And this is probably the piece of criteria that stands out more to me as we look at all of these, is because it's, it's the single one that really allows us to granularly pull down to aleph ourselves. So for example, when we look at absentee, it's also helping us look at how effective are our mitigation going at this point in time? So all the other data, you're looking at a, at a countywide component. So if our mitigation is being successful, we would hope then that we are seeing a lower rate than what we would see in, in the general county. And I think that's, that's important because it, it gives us what's really going on in our schools. When we think about student absenteeism and then when you think about staff absenteeism as well. So it's, it does allow a narrower focus for consideration.
John, can I ask?
Yes.
Would quarantine numbers be included in an absenteeism data point?
Yes, at this point in time, they, they would be. And that's been, that's been a real topic of discussion. KDHE has not specifically said, yes, you should count quarantine, no, you shouldn't. That's been really left up to, to local school districts to make that determination. I know in conversations with other school districts, I think that the consensus would be you would, you would consider quarantine because it's impacting what we're doing instructionally. And those are students that, that aren't able to, to engage. And if you've got large numbers of students quarantined, that's going to impact what teachers are able to do and their planning, as well as where we're able to progress instructionally with those, those students. So to me, absenteeism is if you're unable to attend, then we, we need to be calculating that.
My bone of contention with that is that it's not necessarily indicative of COVID spread. So it could falsely inflate this number. I'm, nothing's perfect, I get it, but just a note to the board that we need to probably have some definitions around that as we go forward.
Yeah, I don't, and I don't think what we're talking about the absenteeism is necessarily this is indicative of the number of COVID confirmed we have, but it's really the impact that it's having on our schools.
Got you.
So even if we begin to see the numbers decrease, but we're seeing the quarantines continue at a high rate, that's having an impact on our, on our system. And I think that's, then the next step is having those conversations with the, the County Department of Health and Environment and saying, okay, so what, what's going on here? It's just a, it, it's the only measure that we see in any of the gating criteria that's truly localized versus on, on a larger basis. The two-week cumulative incident rate, number.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Sorry, just real quick. The absenteeism data point would also require us to put our faith and trust in our community that they are taking this serious and staying home and all that, right?
Correct.
It's one of those self-reporting type of data points where it can be manipulated.
If people aren't staying home, you know, then we're bringing illness, whether it's, it's COVID or, or anything else into our, into our schools and our classrooms, to your credit. It's going to be if you're not showing up, we're going to, we're going to be counted. The incident rate, again, is a two-week time period for KDHE. The trend in the incident rate, the number of new cases each week per 100,000 people compared to the previous week, and then also looking at the percent positive. And as I mentioned earlier, this is where there, you see a difference. KDHE is counting the surveillance testing. Those are your health care officials or whoever else might be tested on a weekly basis. So they're being counted multiple times. They also count in the data some of the antibody testing. Now, that, that portion of it, according to a number of doctors, they don't believe is probably as prevalent as it was a month ago, just because that, that test is not as reliable and fewer physicians are now recommending that folks get the antibody test. So they're seeing those, those numbers decrease just a little bit. And then looking at the hospital capacity. Again, this is one that in talking to, to the medical professionals in, in various groups, there, there's some discussion around how important this, this measure really is when we think about hospitalization. You have folks that say this should be the primary thing that we're taking a look at because the original conversation was around flatten the curve and not overwhelm hospitals. Had other, and even in a conference call listening to the area hospital CEOs, Advent, St. Luke's, KU Med, discuss. St. Luke's, KU Med discussed this, they weren't in complete agreement about how much of a priority that the conversation around hospital capacity should be. You had the argument, it's very important on one hand, and the other is this is really a bellwether for your community. We know more now, we're not hospitalizing as many people when they get COVID, but when you see that go up, that's telling you that you have another issue within your community. So again, that's been really interesting to hear discussions about its prioritization. So then you see how KDHE has set up. It's very similar to the same type of format that we saw with Johnson County. Again, looking at the student absenteeism. So if you're going to be in green, you're looking at it and say, you know, we're less than 3% differential from last year to this year. Then you'll see how that plays out across the basis. The other thing to keep in mind with the KDHE guiding criteria, gating criteria, is they needed to look at what would work for a 1A school district in Western Kansas that really doesn't have an active health department compared to what we see in, say, Johnson County and Sedgwick and Douglas County. So again, it's very much laid out in the same capacity. They go green, yellow, orange, red. So you'll also notice that the revised Johnson County has now matched the KDHE colors. Again, I think that's kind of common as we're seeing alterations made, trying to find some commonalities so that there's less confusion between the various options. And then again, there's the recommendation being made for schools and how that plays out. So along the top, once again, pre-K5, so your elementary is differentiated from the middle school, high school on the secondary. Now, when you go to KDHE website, you're going to find different data points. I will say that it's a little harder to dig into them, to come up with the information to see exactly where you are in some of their gating criteria. And I'm not going to spend a lot of time on each of these, but I just wanted to show the visual, because it's important when we talk about gating criteria, also the accessibility to the information for our community, because it's become a common topic. So as you look at weekly trends, and we think of incident rates, this is the way it's displayed. The other key factor that has to be a consideration in all of the gating criteria is when you select, when are you going to take your snapshot? Because each of these groups update the information differently. KDHE has been doing Monday, Wednesday, Friday. Their count, which is also why you see some differences between Johnson County, even on the cases per 100,000. So you... They look at putting the data in from when the test was run. The county puts the data in for that piece at the time the test was conducted. Two very different functions for the two of them, and you can see why they would do it. The county is looking at a much more specific, how do we handle this in our community? So it's important for them to understand when you showed symptoms and got the test to be able to figure the contact tracing and all of that. KDHE isn't contact tracing. They're aggregating the information for the various counties. So you even have to be careful on when do they update and at what point are certain data measures taken, just so you know that you're getting the most accurate progression. As an example, you can see here, depending on which dates you look, you can see how the trends change. KDHE also looks, when they talk about the trends, and they're not using an analytical line of regression or anything like that. They're basically looking from one week to the next. And if you were at, say, on 8/23, at 100.8 cases, and the prior week you were at 101 case, they would say that you've got an increasing trend, or the other way. So there is a little more variance when you take a look at their data. Again, just showing you how the metrics look when you go online. Laid out fairly consistently between the others, and you do have to drill down to get to Johnson County. But some good information there. You can also look at the age groups that are available. All right, let's talk CDC gating criteria, unless anybody has questions about...
Can I ask about the state data? Is it current? I've heard rumors that it's up to two weeks behind on being entered. Is there any truth to that?
I have not heard about the delay. You do see greater variance with the state data because of that, when the test was run versus when the test was taken. And they do update on Monday, Wednesday, Friday. So that would be key in looking at that particular gating criteria, on what day do you select? Where's your comparison going to be, particularly when you're looking at some of those two weeks? But you do see it fluctuate because of the regular update. At the same time, it varies depending on how efficient the counties are in getting information through KDHE. Johnson County, it's a regular... So we really don't see that lag like you will for some of the Western counties. So CDC is also looking at many of the same indicators. They break it down into core indicators to start with. So you're looking at the number of cases, again, 14 days. You're looking at the percentage of tests that are positive during that last 14 days. They're utilizing the same types of tests that Johnson County is in comparison to the state, and which tests they will count in those numbers. And then this is where you see the ability of schools to implement the five key mitigation strategies. Then you get into the secondary indicators. So then they talk about the percent change in cases, and then they break out four different measures for hospitalization. So you're looking at the number of total beds filled, you're looking at percent of ICU beds, you're looking at percent of inpatients that have COVID, and then looking at what's the localized spread in a community. So what's that outbreak potential in each individual community? And then they break it down. And again, you'll see at the top, they talked about the lowest risk of transmission, and you see how that's been borrowed by some of the other gating criteria. I would point out the five key mitigation strategies, consistent correct use of masks, social distancing to the largest extent possible, and hygiene and respiratory etiquette, cleaning and disinfection, and then contact tracing. How efficient is your contact tracing with the local health department? That is an area that I would say regardless of the gating criteria could eventually become a concern for school districts, is the county's ability to help us process as we provide the information. When it's school-related, we have the ability to know, who did that student sit with at lunch? Those types of things to get information to them, but how quickly can they do the next step follow-up and then provide the recommendation for us on what we need to do? So in some parts of the country, as you saw numbers go up, their local health department got overwhelmed, and that lag became, you know, days. And at that point in time, you've got somebody that could be infected and spreading before you're able to deal with them, whether it's through quarantine or testing. So that's something the CDC included. So you gauge where you are in those five and how consistently and correctly you're able to implement those.
Have school nurses provided a significant number of the contact tracers for the county?
Yes. Yeah, it's relying on... They're having to rely on school districts. That will be an issue as we start to bring more students at whatever point we do back in, because right now, we have secondary nurses that are able to help Miss Morris on doing quite a bit of that. And as numbers creep up, that becomes more time-consuming. If we get to the point where we're bringing secondary students back into schools, then they're not going to be available to do that. The county is working on utilizing or trying to request some CARES funding to be able to help provide some contact tracers for the county school districts, which would be key. And then you see on those secondaries, they talk about the percentages. On the hospitalization, it is important that some of that information is not easily available because of the way it was reported to the... required to be reported to the CDC. So like, Johnson County does not always have the most up-to-date information, which is why you'll see that indicator lag a little bit on their website, because it's actually going to the CDC first, and then you have to back that out. So there's a little research that goes into getting the numbers on some of those secondary indicators. The way CDC does the breakout in recommendations around instructional modalities is much less directly tied, as you've seen in all the other gating criteria. They really look at it and say, all right, we're going to say this is the lowest risk. So students and teachers engaged in virtual classes only, no activities, no events, that's the lowest risk. So their recommendation is if you're in the highest-risk category, then your educational model should be in the lowest risk. You need to be able to marry those two. So it's not as clean as we see in some of the other gating criteria. But then they work through some risk, and they talk about the nuances, the hybrid model, class size, your other mitigation strategies, medium risk, higher risk, highest risk. So again, not a wide variance in the information, we see just a different way in which it's displayed. And then the MARK is probably the one that folks are least familiar with, is the Mid American Regional Council. And I said that's a multi-state county, involves all those county health departments, University of Kansas Medical Center, St. Luke's are some of those. Children's Mercy have also been advisors to this development. So again, we're going to see very, very similar information. Now, this is the most recent revised version that MARK has put out. So again, we're talking new cases per 100,000 the past two weeks. We look at the trending cases, you'll see the CDC, the five mitigation strategies, and the percent of persons testing positive for the two-week period. Again, very similar to what we're seeing in other criteria. And then they have a secondary criteria, which is the percentage of hospital inpatient beds in the community that are occupied by patients with COVID. And as part of that discussion, the hospitals felt that this was the best measure, at least in the conversation I heard in part of this development. And they wanted to stress that it didn't necessarily mean you were hospitalized because of COVID, but that the number of beds, you may have come in for an appendicitis, and when they do your COVID test, you test positive. So they wanted to make that distinction. And the reason it was important is because once an individual tests positive for COVID, it then becomes very specific in the way in which they have to deal with them, the PPE, the staff that can deal with them, the medical equipment that's used. They're not moving between COVID, non-COVID areas, or it has to be sterilized. And they said that begins to put pressure on the hospitals, where you may have beds available, but if you've got a higher percentage of folks, whether they come in for COVID or elective surgery, puts stress on the hospital system. And then their three areas, they use just green, yellow, red, so a little less distinction in their designations. Those are the various gating criterias.
That's a question.
There will be a quiz I'm going to put up shortly. It will be public on how well you score. So you can see where there's the commonalities, and then there are some differences between each of the gating criteria. In many ways, it's more around the time period and snapshot, or what's included in the positivity rates in the way the tests are calculated. But you do see some variance between each of those. So as we think back to August 6th in our discussion, we had one choice as we looked at what's the science and the experts telling us. That has since been revised, and then we see these three other options that are available for us to think about what's the best fit for ALA-PA.
Mr. Allison, I know you meet with a lot of the other area superintendents, and everybody's kind of taking different pieces of some of this, I know, over time, and shifted with it. Like with some of the ones, like KDHE, for instance, are they scoring each? Is there weighting to some of those? Is everybody doing that a little bit differently? Is everything handled equally? Or are some of the other districts doing different? Can you just talk a little bit about what some of our area schools are doing as well?
KDHE has probably provided the least of the guidance in how to rate. So as you look across, you know, do you have category that's red, and maybe you've got one that's orange, and you've got one that's yellow, or two that are yellow? How do you do that? So what most of the school districts have done is they've applied a weighting system. So if you look at the five criteria there, you might say green's worth four, yellow's worth three, orange is worth two, and red is worth one. So you would calculate where you are in each of those categories, you'd add up that total, and then you divide by five. Right now, because we only had elementary in person at this point in time, our absentee rate would be around the elementary component. So... And that's been for most districts, that's just been one of those categories you can't really calculate until you've got some presence of kids in school. So then they divide it out, and you can do it the opposite way, you know, one, two, three, four. It's going to end up being pretty much the same.
Thank you.
So when you say one, two, three, four, is that ranking in order of importance? Do you want to explain that?
Score. So when you think of either starting with green, and a green category is worth four points or one point. So you're either going green, one, yellow, two, red, three, orange, or four, or you're doing it the other way around. So it really doesn't matter which way you do it. When you do the addition and add out, you're going to end up within the same category. You know, most of the time, you're going to have a... It's not going to come out clean. So then boards have had to have that discussion on, do you round up or do you round down? And we saw that be a hot topic with a neighboring school district in the area that, you know, how are you going to... If you're at 2.5, is that go into the three category, or is it into the two category?
Mr. Allison? As in a non-COVID world, as relates to absenteeism, are there measures that the county would take based on our absenteeism related to illnesses and sicknesses in our buildings?
Yes. And there are set levels in which we're reporting to them, particularly like during a flu season when a particular school reaches, I don't know if Ms. Morris is... 10%?
10% overall, or 5% from one day to the next.
And is that still in place during COVID?
Yes.
So there's already an absenteeism component theoretically built into...
That we follow, yes. Not part of their gating criteria at this point, but yes.
But that's on a building-to-building basis, as opposed to district-wide, correct? And one of the criteria that we looked at does take a snapshot of the district for absenteeism. Is that accurate?
Correct. And I think it would also allow you to take that next level down and look at building-to-building as well.
So I have a question about whose data we use. We've got these variety of different matrices. But do we want to point at one source of data as being the easiest to interpret, the easiest to find, the most reliable? And if so, how do we do that?
And with the... Just to piggyback on that, wouldn't each individual entity have developed their criteria based on their data? See what I'm saying? Like, we wouldn't apply KDHE's criteria to Johnson County's data because they were developed knowing how they were testing. knowing how they were testing, what tests they were including, some of those pieces?
Yes. My answer to that would be depending on which gating criteria you're using, they've each tied data sources to that particular criteria point. So you wouldn't use Johnson County's gating criteria necessarily with KDHE's data. Now, some of them will be identical, but it's really that percent positivity, and then some of the, some of the secondary areas would differ from group to group. So it's, I think it really depends, all of these, with the exception of the CDC in a couple of those areas, you have to go back to your local county for some of those measurements on what they have available on their website. But it'd really be tied to the data points that they've tied to their criteria.
So for instance, with the MARK gating criteria, are they taking a snapshot of the entire region, and then using the regional data to determine what our, would we be using regional data to determine what our district does?
No. In that particular instance, they're using county data that they're applying to the individual county. The one area where their regional data would come into play is on the hospitalization. So they're, you know, from Lyon County, they're taking that data. When you go to their website and you want to look at the specifics, then they're pulling from the local county.
How available is the regional data? I'm looking at the MARK secondary criteria for the hospital inpatient beds with patients with COVID. I like that piece of this puzzle, but how hard is it to drill down and get that number? Is that going to be convoluted by that CDC process that we're seeing here in the county?
I can't answer that question. As new as this data is, or the criteria is, they've revised it since the 25th. That's a question that we have for them, and they have not yet caught up in all of them, just like the county. They've put the gating criteria, made the changes, now their data sets on the websites need to change. So that did not seem to be a concern for them in the conversation as they walked through some of the changes they were going to make, that that information would be difficult for them to provide. So I wouldn't be concerned with that. MARK has been, has been very good about making sure that when they're looking at particular criteria, that the data sets are available, and that they've been able to pull those together.
Mr. Allison...
They've been pretty efficient.
How, what's your, what would be your recommendation, or maybe what other districts again are doing who are using these? Being the largest district around here, I mean, we've run into food service potentially, you know, we've got a plan plenty ahead of time. How frequently would you say we would, we would look at this? Would it be on an every-two-week basis? Would it be once a month? Would it be every week? Would it be every day? What's your thought on that, and what others are doing, and able to, still be able to legitimately pivot our transportation and food service and all of that, and also make it fair to our constituents?
Constituents. Of those that I'm aware of, they're on the minimum end, looking typically at two weeks. And on the other side of that, some of them are looking at 30 days. And it really, I think, is the gauge of what we have to think about within our community to be able to provide notice, our teachers to be able to plan and to think that through. I also think that varies a little if you're moving from a more restrictive to a less restrictive. So if you were going from, say, a hybrid to everybody coming to school, that's probably, could be a shorter transition period. If you were moving from a least restrictive to a more restrictive, then your transition period may have to be a little longer for everybody to be able to prepare and handle that, so.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't really have a question, but I have a comment. Thank you so much for this information, at least comparing all the different gating criteria that others have developed. You know, I think I see hope, or at least see some flexibility in our approach to getting kids back in school at some point. And I like the idea that we're able to use different gating criteria. I see there's been some changes and some additions to even Johnson County, which is helpful, because I know what we agreed to back in August, but that's when we knew very little. But I don't know, I'm just encouraged by what I see in this criteria.
Like I said, I think this will continue to evolve. Two months from now, we may, we will continue regardless of which gating criteria we're using and looking at. I think you'll see each of them evolving as conditions change and we know more moving forward, so.
So can I ask a...
No, go ahead.
I was going to ask about the mitigation strategies, you know, the five critical ones. Is there one that's more important than the others? Is there a way to weight that? Because I'm with the flatten the curve crowd. I mean, I don't think COVID is fake, but I also think that we're sacrificing our children on the altar of safety, and it's a shame. And I love teachers, so it's fully compatible. But it does concern me that spread is high enough now that if we were to try to get kids in school, we are not socially distancing the desk far enough apart. So if we're masking and we're doing all of those other pieces of mitigation, is there a way to represent that in the data points that are in any of these, you know? Is there a way to express that? So we truly know, and we aren't falsely inflating our mitigation efforts, you know? I want it to be honest and accurate, but I also want the kids in school.
I have not seen any information that would say that there's any rank order to these, other than that the masks tend to be, you know, on the top of everybody's list. I think that's why they looked at these five and, you know, felt like they're effective in combination. So the more you're doing, the more effective you're going to be versus, you know, this one's really going to get you 80% of the way, and these others are just 5%. So I think that's, my understanding is that's why they grouped them the way they have and not prioritize necessarily.
Okay. And so have there been any districts that open up and say, you know, we're going fully in-person until we can't, until the county shuts us down? Has that, is that what happened in Florida? I know they opened with high rates, and they have not had the whole system come crashing down, but is that basically what happened?
I don't know specifically for Florida and some of the specifics on how they handle that. I think you can look across Kansas and see examples of that. On both sides of the conversation, you've seen districts that opened, you know, full, all students in five days a week, and you see examples of districts that had then had to step back. We've got one in the general area that just yesterday, they'd gone K-12 hybrid. For them, at least the information that I read, it's been a staffing issue in substitutes and some other things, and they're having to step back and take a look at remote for a period of time to try to mitigate that. So it's very unique based on the individual communities and how effective they've been and where the community spread it.
Yeah, I don't know if my fellow board members would ever consider discussing, after hearing everything we heard tonight, you know, from the children and the teachers. And by the way, I did not compare a teacher to a Jose Peper waitstaff person. I said if they can work, a teacher can work during this pandemic. And I fully believe that, and I believe the majority of teachers want to work during this pandemic. And so I would, I'm going to be the crazy one that says this out loud. I think our kids need to be back in school, and I think that the spread is falsely inflated with the testing not being rigorous enough in our state, and I think it's something we have to have the conversation about. I realize this is also a reality that we don't want it to go crazy within our community, but I believe that the parents have assumed the risk for their children when they've enrolled them in-person. We've done mitigation with the exception of social distancing being ideal, it's less than ideal. And I'm just going to throw it out there, guys, and see what you think.
So I don't know if we want to have a motion and then talk about it, or do we want to just have a discussion about what Ms. Felter said here? I'm good either way.
So you're suggesting no gating criteria at all? Could we just throw the rest, just take all this stuff and just set it aside?
I'm saying, I believe in science. I believe science organically is changing. As we know better, we do better. I'm saying the 15% threshold where we go remote no matter what, you know, like elementary, why not say that's what we're doing? That we're going to go remote if we hit 15% threshold, and until we do, we're going to let our kids, that the parents have opted to have them in school, be in school in-person. I know it's a lot to throw out there. We haven't discussed this at all, and, you know, I know people were concerned in emailing us thinking that we had pre-strategized this. We haven't. This is a governing body doing transparent governance and policymaking, and so I'd love to have the conversation. To me, the protocol, if you want me to make a motion, we can do that.
Anyone else have...
I don't think what you're suggesting is, and any of the criteria we saw, we've seen tonight is there.
Say that again, like...
You're suggesting that until we get to 15%, everybody should be in the buildings?
Yeah, I'm saying, and thanks for saying that. We heard over and over that hybrid from both teachers and parents and students, so from all three of our main constituents, that they do not want hybrid. And I was looking at the NPR report that came out this, on September 22nd. I mean, this, I have it circled on my page. The daily infection rates for schools, for school staff is double in a hybrid mode. So that, the source for that is, it's the COVID-19 School Response Dashboard with NPR. And so I love our teachers, and I'm looking at this data. You get 24 per 100,000 when you're fully remote. When you go hybrid, you get 52 per 100,000. When you're full capacity in-person, the staff members that get COVID, 21 per 100,000. It's less in full capacity than remote and hybrid. And so I'm not a scientist, but I'm just saying, there's enough here to cause me to pause and say, guys, in the name of safety, I can't justify not at least bravely throwing this out there, that we don't know what we don't know. We do know that kids are stressed out, they're not learning what they should learn. The risk is there, but you can assume the risk, and the numbers are minuscule compared to the tragedy that we've inflicted with lockdowns and all that we've done in doing remote school. That's why I'm thinking, so I'm kind of argumentally working on this.
I'm looking at freshly updated Health Department criteria from our local health department that would suggest that that would be reckless. And so if we're going to say that we are believing in science, following science, following expert advice, I can't, I can't find anything that would suggest that that would be the prudent thing to do.
I hear you, but the data we are looking at from Johnson County excludes like the mitigation efforts, some of the framework that John just threw out there, the hospital beds with the COVID patients, none of that is in the framework of Johnson County Department of Health and Environment. So it would lower that percentage.
You're saying that the only threshold that we should observe is if there's community spread in excess of 15%?
Yeah.
So those data points don't matter?
No, but I'm saying that they matter to me to consider adjusting the framework of the guidance by the county to allow our students and the families to have the option up until... In other words, what we were doing in March when we had a community shutdown, we could go back to living life, and you have remote or in-person options, and then if you chose in-person, we're going to let you go, unless it's not safe.
Until we get to 15%?
Right.
So if we contribute to getting to 15%, then all of our elementary families are remote?
Yeah. And the data is showing, look at Florida...
She's not sure if I'm a foot.
Say that again?
I said if we're contributing to getting to 15%, it's like we're doing ourselves a disservice then.
Yeah, that's the big if. Look at Florida. Florida opened, it did not happen, and they had as high a community spread as we do right now.
We've had full elementary for four days.
Right.
So we won't even know what the ramifications of that decision are for a couple of weeks at a minimum.
No, I hear you totally. I'm saying, let's throw it out there, and let's vote it up or down. How about that?
If, so here's the deal, is we have new criteria, we have Johnson County updated their criteria, so we need to give staff again guidance on where we'd like them to head. So anyone can make a motion, and then we debate it, and then we vote, and then if that passes, that's what staff will do. If it's not, then we have a new motion. So anyone here can make, can make a motion.
So is there anybody that has...
I would just add, I understand where you're going on that, Lieta, but I can't support that at this time. I understand your passion for that, and I want kids in school too, but I'm just not ready for that yet.
I appreciate that. Well, then I won't make the motion, but I would speak to the elements that should be included in the Johnson County Department gating criteria. If we added a few tweaks to that, I believe that the number would be more accurately reflective of the community spread. Does that make sense? Specifically, I like the percentage of hospital inpatient beds from the MARK gating criteria, and then the absenteeism, because it drills down locally.
My understanding is we already observe the flux of absenteeism.
No.
Is that accurate?
Yes.
It's not part of the gating criteria, but it's part of our normal practices. Is that correct, Mrs. Morris?
Yes.
Our people can't hear you.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting that it's not something that should be included. I'm suggesting that it de facto already is.
It's already reported to the Health Department by school nurses, so anytime they trigger that 10%, and that's not just students, that is a 10% composite of the total human bodies in the building. So that includes staff. And once we trigger 10%, that's reported automatically, that's reported by our nurses to the Health Department. They take that into consideration and then make a judgment on whether to, you know, maintain, keep an eye on it, maintain the building being open, or whether they feel like it, under the circumstances, warrants closing that school.
Is it fair to say that it would be an easy thing to simply add that to the matrix that we're using, whatever matrix that may be? That it's simply...
I think it would automatically trigger, because whatever matrix you use, we're still going to be reporting that to the Health Department, and they will still, independent of what you do, if they feel that they have a situation that they need to control, they can take those measures anyway.
So it would actually be complicating if we adopted a secondary absenteeism matrix or data point?
Not necessarily. What I'm saying is, it's not represented in the number reflected in the gating criteria. It's separate from it. If we add it as an element, its impact is shown within the gating criteria.
I think that the difference would be the 10% would be in, if you look at the state criteria, would be in red. You'd be at the very top. So you would have progressed from very little absenteeism and almost waiting till you get to the most extreme. If you look at the way they've got it outlined, so it's less than 3% comparison, 3 to 5.9, 6 to 9.9. So at least in that, if we're looking at this, say, every two weeks, we're seeing... If you look at the way they've, they've got it outlined, so it's less than 3% comparison, 3 to 5.9, 6 to 9.9. So, at least in that, if we're looking at this, say, every two weeks, we're seeing that the incremental tick versus, it's got to get to the, to the extreme before the county would trigger that.
Yeah.
Yeah, including it just gives us a good idea of what we're at. Not a drop dead data, shatter down the county. We would know where we sit within a certain data point. So I think, I think that's why it does make a lot of sense to add that to whatever. I mean, if we go with KDHE, it's already there. But I do think, to Mr. Allison's point, it gives us a good, as good a snapshot of our, of what we're doing as, as anything that's out there today. If something changes, then by all means, that would be good. But I do think adding that to, if we decided to stick with Johnson County, adding that is just an additional piece, I think would make a lot of sense.
Yeah. I typically don't like the idea of tinkering with criteria because it was developed purposefully. I do really like the absenteeism piece because I do think it speaks to local. The same way that I like the Johnson County criteria because it's, it's the most local that we have. Right? It's going to take into account what's happening closest to our schools. But I do like the absenteeism piece. And Christian, you made a good point, but if we did have the different, you know, levels, I think then it's, it's not an all or none.
Right, I agree. That makes sense.
And what do you guys think about the inpatient beds occupied by patients with COVID?
So that would be CDC?
It's from Mark.
It's from Mark?
Uh-huh.
So John, I apologize. Can you give us just kind of a quick rundown on what that would look like?
I believe it's also included in the CDC. I don't know if it's worded exactly the same, so let me take a look. So since Mark has included that, they'll have a data set that we can pull for that measure.
And would that be regional, or that would be?
It's the same as, it's also included in the CDC criteria. So they're, they're the same. The hospital data tends to be, the hospital data we can get now is regional. So it tends to be the metro, the metro area.
I would just throw out there that I, my personal opinion would be to stick with the county, but add the absentee. I don't like adding a second metric, but, you know, I'm open to that being part of the motion.
I tend to agree.
Well, as it relates to the county's criteria, in the orange, there's a remote or hybrid option. At what point, I mean, who's making that decision? Is that been a board decision, or is that a Mr. Allison decision in consultation with board officers? Because that's either or.
Well, I think if you're, I think if your, if your other, if your other gating criteria is, let's say in your case, left, let's say it's yellow, then you would tend to lean that way, right? And if it was red, you would lean that way. I mean, that would be my thought, but, you know what I'm saying, like?
But I don't think there is a firm answer for that.
Yeah, there's not a?
We would, you know, if we're, we don't really even know where we're at, since we're kind of change, we have a new, we have a new gating criteria, and then we're adding to it. So, it may be something where we have, I know this will get some groans, but a special meeting to decide that. Or it may just be that it's obvious to all of us what that would be, and we don't have to have a special?
Because there are modifying variables in that updated Johnson County criteria. So you'd have to take those into account as well.
I think we would make that motion, recognize that that might be an issue we have to come back and address.
Okay. I just want to make sure that everybody was clear that there is that or there, and we would need to make a second decision.
Yeah. That's wise.
Yes.
Well, and I think we need to acknowledge in some fashion that the Johnson County gating criteria changed. And we probably don't just default to that change, right? So, we probably need to have some motion to adapt the updated, and then to add the absenteeism. And I would, I would ask for the hospital beds also, but... And then we also had modified the original Johnson County gating criteria to allow activities in athletics. So we need to craft a motion that's worded to make sure we acknowledge all of this.
I had forgotten the extraparicular part of that. So does somebody care to try to make a motion on that that encompasses all of that?
Well, I think, we'll go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, make the motion, then we can talk or debate on this, because?
Please.
Well, if you've got other things, then?
Well, I mean, my biggest, my biggest concern is a little bit, this is going to go back to, really, I don't really know where, like the rest of the world, I don't know where to go. But, you know, to Lieta's point, I, like, I think we all want everybody in person. You know, coming here tonight, I felt like, gosh, we could get all the kids in five days a week at some level, and a hybrid, and all that. And just hearing how much, I guess, dislike there was for hybrid from all levels. I have a concern that we're kind of going down the path of, you know, what are we doing? You know, what are we, we're mixing things up in the middle of the semester. We're going, you know, we're going to mess with the teachers, planning. We've got parents that are, and I'm not saying we're going to be in the hybrid with what we get here, but I was kind of okay with it at a certain point. But as I, as I heard everybody talk here, and we heard that, you know, teachers weren't real excited of it. I've heard Mr. Allison in the past say that hybrid, they're just not a good hybrid. Although I like the ones we have, I almost feel like, like, I'd like to visit more about the other's option than, not necessarily that exact piece, but do we make it just cleaner? I don't know. I just, or do we just keep it all in remote where we're at, you know, for the semester? I hate to go that route either, because I know there's, I heard so many kids say, because the social emotional piece is there. But if we feel like hybrid is something that we are good with as a group, if our gating criteria gets us there with this type, then obviously that's good of the group. But I'm, I just, I'm really struggling with, with as much as I, as I heard tonight about hybrid challenges, you know, I'd almost, again, I'm, I just want to make sure we're there. But let's make the motion and go on. That's just my ramblings for the night.
No, I think that that's a good observation, because I have my reservations a little bit with, with hybrid. But I think the alternative there, and this is, I think, depending on where we land with the, with the gating criteria, that, you know, hybrid becomes an option. It's not mandated, right? But I also don't think that we just jump to green, like, ah, that's cool.
No, I, I agree with that. My biggest thing is, is really, I want to get the kids in, because I know there are ki, I mean, the abuse that's going on at home and stuff isn't getting reported. We know those types of things are happening out there. I hate to even admit that, because it, we all know it. But I want to get kids in, so there were at least a barrier for some of those types of things, and being able to get kids in school. And but if it's, you know, if it's, if it's hybrid, it's got to be that way. No one likes it, that's the hard part. So, and you were, in your profession, you know, you're dealing with kids that are having a hard time a lot. And, you know, it's, it's hard right now for a lot of kids. And, and so I want to get them in the buildings. I want the teachers interacting with them as best they can, and all that piece. It's just a matter of, of how we get there safely. And again, I don't know that jumping right into green is, is really safely with the data we have today, all encompassing data. But I also, I don't feel like remote is helping anybody right now from a standpoint, other than a few kids we heard from that do like sitting in front of the computer screen and feel like you need to get 90 minutes. But that's, you know?
Well, if I can add, what, the reason why I felt like, okay, I'm willing to put myself out there as a crazy woman, because first of all, I have the street credentials to prove that I believe in COVID and I care. I started Masks of Mercy, and we have made and donated over 23,000 masks to our community. So I've, I've done everything I can to prevent it. We've socially distanced. I subscribe to all of the pillars of infection control. But when I, when we say we do things the Olatha way, we reflect our community. We can't ignore the people that are talking, and it's not just the loudest voices. The teachers also say that, over and over, I wrote some things down, they want consistency. They want less, they don't want hybrid. They want to be with their kids. Well, even Dr. Fauci says, if you wear a mask and you practice the pillars of infection control, that you're not going to get COVID. Now, and statistically, that's true. So, how much risk can we tolerate as a district, knowing these things? Well, personally, if I can provide consistency, the window of opportunity for the students that have had their parents, with their coordinated effort, enroll in in-person learning, how much risk can we tolerate and empower the parents? And we don't have to be the nanny state, especially since none of us really know what's going on, including the specialist, that, I mean, we're learning as we go organically. So we could still be responsive and close down if infections go crazy.
What's the nanny state?
Meaning, meaning we as a school district are telling families, no, we're not going to allow you to come to school. That, to me, is the nanny state. I'm saying, I think parents know well enough what their risk tolerance is. They're educated enough in the framework of this environment and our life in the pandemic, that I believe they can make the decision themselves. Then that leaves us with the teachers. Some of them don't have, you know, the choice of being in the classrooms. And we love our teachers. So if the mitigation efforts work, we won't have spread. If they don't work, we will have spread, and then we will have shutdown. It's not ideal. None of this is ideal. But that's what made me just say it out loud. I mean, I really think every school district should consider opening backup, even if, even if somebody gets sick. It is a pandemic, even if.
Well, and I appreciate you putting it out there, Lieta, because it is an important discussion to have. I just, I've already stated where I stand, so there's no need in repeating it. But I do appreciate you bringing it up.
And we both love kids, right? So you can have opposite opinions, it's very fine.
I just want to make sure I'm clear.
Oh, go ahead.
I want all of our kids back in school. I'm sure all of our teachers do. And I don't think I'm being the nanny state when I err on the side of safety for our teachers and our students. And for me to make a decision that says, I think all our teachers and our students should be back in school five days a week, I'm just not there yet.
I'm going to attempt to make a motion, Joy.
Just talk slow, please.
Enjoy this. I move that the Olatha School District follows the Johnson County gating criteria for learning mode decisions with the addition of the absentee metric from the KDHE gating criteria, all metrics will be weighed equally. Does that kind of summarize?
And the decoupling of the activities and athletics.
So, learning mode is trying to decouple that?
Okay.
The absentee metric from which?
KDHE. Is that correct, John? That's the correct way to, okay.
Second.
Motion by me? Second by Mr. Boyd.
Discussion?
Oh, do we want to discuss? We kind of already have been, but if anyone else has any?
Should we tag on the authorization for the superintendent to make adjustments as needed with consultation with board officers?
So, if, I didn't bring my Roberts rules, but I think you can do an amendment to my motion. I would accept that. I would, I would, I would consider that a positive.
Okay. You're just trying to set us up where we don't have to have a lot of meetings, you know? And that would give a good foundation.
And, so would you like to read that off to Joy? And do we vote on that separately, or do we vote on the whole?
I think we have to vote on yours first.
Vote on?
I believe we vote on yours for?
Okay, okay.
Can I just have a point?
I didn't know if we could vote on making an amendment to my original motion.
It hasn't been approved yet.
Okay.
We need to approve yours, and then?
Or not approve yours.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Brian, go ahead.
Can I have a point of clarification real quick? So what's the?
Or with the draw?
And this is from Mr. Allison mainly. What would you suggest, or does anybody have an idea on, on our measurement? Are we going to measure this? So I think that needs, I'd like that kind of clarified, like, are we going to do it?
Weekly?
Every two weeks? Is it every three? How quickly can we, can we pivot a district of our size to? Again, I know it matters which direction you're going a little bit, but I want to be at least prepared for that, should it be moving? I mean, is a?
Well, I think, we're going to have to do some follow-up with Johnson County to determine when they're going to update their data, those types of things, for us to be able to determine.
How soon could we make this, if this were to pass? Let's put it that way. I mean, like, next week, would we make a gating read and then start it? I think we have conferences the 12th. I mean, is it like two-week time period? Is that, no, if I mean?
If, if you're asking if, if the gating criteria indicated an opportunity to move to a new?
Learning mode?
Learning mode.
Just a week of the 19th, soon enough, or?
Fastest would be the 19th, just because of, of, you've got conferences, food service, transportation setups. So, at least sometime by the end of the month, yeah. We just have to, have to look and?
That's fine. I mean, I don't?
And so, but we would have a sense of urgency if, if the reflected number, which we don't even know, we just saw the Johnson County changes today. But let's say that it would allow hybrid. It pops up and it would allow it. We would have a sense of urgency to figure out a way to get there, right?
Yes, if that's the direction the board decided to go, we'd, we'd figure out a way.
Do we need to have a vote on, if we're going to hybrid, or do we?
I think we need to figure out the data set for the county and where we'd be.
That's why I don't even think we have to have that vote, because the criteria.
The criteria.
The only caveat would be when Mr. Boyd was saying where we're in.
The tipping point, yeah.
We're in an area that gives us the option. Then we have to make a decision whether Brian and I get to, I mean, I think we would involve the whole board. We wouldn't want that to be a decision, that's just Brian, John and I.
That'd be a wise decision.
Yes, I would, I will first and second.
So do we need to withdraw that motion, or?
No.
Vote it.
Vote it.
Down.
So we'll vote on that, and then we'll vote on an amendment next? Will that, would that be acceptable, Joy? Okay. Yeah.
Do we need to even begin? See if I got it right?
Yes, please.
Sure.
The Olatha School District follows the Johnson County gating criteria for learning mode decisions with the addition of the absentee metric from KDHD, HE. Sound right?
KDHE gating criteria. And then all metrics will be weighed equally?
Are we adding?
I think I said that.
I'm sorry. All metrics will be?
Weighted equally.
It's late, I don't think well at night.
You're doing great.
And it's metrics, not matrix. Yeah. All metrics.
Yep. Okay, you ready?
Yes.
Ms. Wycliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
And then I would like to offer up the amendment, just for the sake of tidiness, to authorize the superintendent, in consultation with board officers, to make changes as necessary. Changes will be communicated to the Board of Education. And when possible, delay to allow for consideration of the Board of Ed. And Joy, that's the same motion add-on we had from August.
Second, if you need one.
Okay, motion by Ms. Felter, second by Mr. Geary. We'll let you write that down.
Or she can give it to you.
Hey, Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Wycliffe?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that discussion. Moving on to 6.02 participation in high-risk activities and athletics. Mr. Geary or Mr. McHugh, I know you, I don't know who wants to take the lead on this, but-
Mr. McHugh.
Official discussion or comment?
I think you were going to make a motion or anything.
Yep. I would like to make a motion that all students that signed up for in-person learning that also participate in high-risk activities as categorized by the NFHS be treated with the same gating criteria as other Olath in-person learners.
I'll second that.
Okay, so now, questions, comments?
Why?
Well, I was, my, my thoughts on this, again, I, I had, when we, when we included this, and again, we're the only district house besides Wichita that require, are requiring that around here, as far as having our high-risk activities kids stay remote, the, the, the remote definition at that time, my understanding, was that they would be in the same learning category that they would, or maybe drive down to something like edgenuity as a learning opportunity. Now, that has changed according to my understanding that the remote will be as if you were in a out-sick mode. I don't know what the right term is that, but you would basically be either picking up homework or having it emailed to you and you turning it back in with minimal. So, so for instance, our, our play, I think for football, for example, October 30th is the first round of the playoffs. If they went two weeks after that, you got kids that are basically having almost no interaction until November 14th, unless they get a negative COVID test. Some kids may go the rest of the semester learning in that method. When, when I was under the understanding of learning in remote, I thought it's still going to be able to learn in their, how they happen, or at least maybe a slight change to, to the edgenuity product there. So that was my, I want to have that discussion because I do have some concerns about some of the schools that might make it far into the playoffs would have to, literally, the rest of the semester would have to get their schoolwork either emailed to them, provided by their teachers for the rest of the semester, or have their parents go pick it up, if that's an option, and then return it back. And that's, that is a hard, long-term learning environment to me, and not the same remote learning that I, excuse me, had the understanding that would, that would be taking place. So I thought, well, with the current incidence, and again, I don't know if Mr. Brady has situations right now with football, or how we've done, or any of the other band. I know they're playing at halftime in some of the sports, any of those high-risk activities. I guess it was just football that's required to be remote. You know, those would be, I wanted to have that conversation because that had changed, at least from my understanding of how things were, were going to be treated going forward, so.
Mr. Allison, do we know what the, that student population number looks like in terms of cases, quarantines and all that?
Specifically for football, we have a total so far since September, September 4th through the 30th, three, five, five students quarantined.
So, so that, I'm clear, like, what exactly is their learning modality? Should their peers, should we decide, and the gating criteria allows for it, should we move to hybrid? What are, what would their learning modality be?
So under the, the, the current direction we were provided with, with the motion that students would need to be in remote or a positive COVID test, we had talked about what that might look like. One of the suggestions was around using edgenuity. Feedback from teachers and high school staff is that their concern is based on how students, it may only be the two weeks that, that a student would be out, depending on the length of that particular school season, or if you made it into state, you'd be Thanksgiving. That aligning, say, edgenuity for a period of a couple weeks would, there was concern that that would put the students behind compared to where the rest of the class would be. So if they were remote, it's, if, if they've signed up for full-time remote, that's not an issue. If they've signed up for in-person, then that, that becomes a challenge. So the feeling was it would be more advantageous instructionally than if it was more asynchronous learning and, you know, they were provided the same syllabus for the period they were gone, that, that the class would have, but they're not going to get any direct instruction. Now, edgenuity is more-
And that's just my, my concern.
More interactive, but-
For some kids.
Harder to align to the exact component that they're doing there to what's going on in the classroom.
And then when they come back, it's, oh.
Correct.
And if we do get to hybrid, I mean, you're also, we're mitigating that much more by, by going there. So that, that was my, that was why I wanted to bring it up. I, I feel like there's some kids that, I mean, like, if a kid lost in the first round and they went the next day and got a negative test, they'd go. There's some kids that might not be able to afford a, a test that quickly, and they've got two more weeks, they've got to sit beyond that. There's just a lot of factors that play in there, and again, I-
Kind of an equity issue?
Well, I don't want to blame, I don't want to say equity issue, but it was, that's part of it, but also part of this, just my understanding of remote when we did this originally was different than what it came out to be, not default of the district. I just don't think that anybody knew, and I think we went, like, oh, anyway, that was my reason for even, possibly even having an OHA.
No, yeah.
But it was a condition for moving forward on decoupling athletic, especially high-risk athletics, that there was this agreement that those students would not be commingling in buildings with the rest of the student population and staff.
Right.
So what we're suggesting now is that we ignore that. We're changing.
Yes, yes. Because of the alternative piece of that, the weighting of that, of, are we okay with that in, in some of the hybrid down that we have versus the learning mode that's, that they're going to be in place, and we're going to put them that far behind. I mean, I feel like having them in for potentially a, you know, a couple weeks is, is, you know, better than, for their education purpose. And I mean, again, it's, the group bill, but that was my, that's, yes, that's what I'm suggesting. We waive that. And again, we're the only, Wichita is the only other district that has put that in place. The other, Johnson County, has allowed for athletes to be in the same, regardless of risk, high-risk.
Well, and I'll say, I crafted the motion for the activities and athletics. If, I'm just kind of a policy wonk, and so I started researching, and I said, Joe, Brian, what do you think about this? And so, so the element of adding that exclusion of being in person for two weeks or a negative test came from Wichita, because they were the only ones who had done it. And I tweaked it a little. I think I added a negative test. I think they had two weeks, so.
Everybody else approved theirs after.
Yeah, we were the first in Johnson County to get the activities and athletics passed. So when I said, you know, remote, I envisioned, like, online learning. And so, Brian, is, are you saying that they're not-
That's what I'm saying, that that was what they were supposed to do, is online learning.
And, and you're saying that it's not that, that they're getting homework brought, will you explain that? Yeah.
Well, Mr. Allison-
I think you did.
You just walked through, yeah.
Yeah, because I did.
It sounds to me as though the change that's been suggested is actually academically better for the students, because they're not being taken off of what right now is being delivered remotely, but maybe more rigorous. And what they would have had to do is switch to edgenuity, which is not, not always as rigorous. And so they're actually getting the opportunity to continue in their coursework.
It's not as much the rigor as it is the alignment.
The alignment?
That's the concern. Mr. Allison, is that fair to say?
So, anyway, that's motion on the table, I guess.
Do, can I, do we have any idea on numbers and whether it's a small enough amount that could be moved to remote, or is that something that would need to be?
To, to actually remove, to, to move to a remote teacher for that time period, I mean, you're, you're talking varsity-wise, 90 to 100 kids per high school. So that's shifting almost 500 students potentially, and that, that, that's not going to be possible for those, for those teachers.
Well, I'll just throw out there, I understand what you're trying to do here, Brian, but I'm still not comfortable with it, just because this, that was kind of the key piece to me getting on board activities and athletics, and so I, I don't support this, but I appreciate what you're trying to do here.
Okay.
If there's no other comments or questions, then I guess we can go to a vote.
Mr. Beveridge?
No.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
No.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
No.
Mr. Boyd?
No.
All right. Moving on to future action items, 7.01 through 7.08, just for heads up for the board. And then informational written, September Head Start Director's Report.
Joe, could I-
Oh, go ahead.
Talk about Head Start a second?
Yeah, sure.
So I know it's late, guys, but it's, the Head Start is always at the end of the agenda, so it's easy to brush over it, but our early learners, I mean, this is when your brain architecture is forming and the investment is critical. And so, Kim Seals, the director, was so kind to call me because I had some questions after this report, because usually we have a long waiting list, Shannon knows because he's been on the board. Brad, Mr. Boyd, are you the board member right now on Head Start?
I'm not.
So usually there's at least 75 people on the waitlist, and so now we're at like 80% capacity. And so I, I thought, okay, what, are people afraid in keeping kids home? And there's a little bit of that, but they're doing social distancing and rigorous work still being done. They just have decreased their capacity and doing some real intentional work with kids. So I, I don't want to brush over that. These are often our English language learners, families living in poverty by the nature of the design of Head Start. So this is intentional investment in the most vulnerable populations, and I've got a big stack of papers, but Kim said the biggest issue they are facing right now is because they're with the littles all day, the teachers can't take their mask off, really, ever. And so, like, they'll slip out in the hall and have a bite of lunch. And so, teachers, we know you're, it's challenges like no one's ever faced before, and we are so grateful, especially Head Start teachers, because it's like that whole extra layer of difficult. And so I wanted to highlight that, and hopefully we can have, if Kim maybe come this year and give a report for us, because it's a valuable investment locally.
Absolutely. All right. Then moving on for topics of discussion, does anyone have anything that they'd like to discuss? I'm just going to, kind of for clarification purposes, John, are you thinking maybe next week, sometime after digesting what we just voted on, getting data from the county, that we would have some kind of announcement of where, where we were at? And then I did want to just kind of point out, we were going to have to make some change regardless. You know, I know a lot of parents and teachers are wanting consistency. We're, we're trying to get that, but it's not always possible. And with the county changing their criteria, there was going to be this discussion regardless. So we, this was something that was, we were going to have to do anyway. But I was just curious, timing-wise, what you're thinking.
Yes, if possible, I'll get follow-up information tomorrow from, from the county, and we can walk through and kind of try to outline that. I think we, we need to be very specific about the way in which the, the criteria and its location for data is being pulled. I'd like to add that to our dashboard so that it's, it's easy to see. And we've got to confirm when they're going to update information and some of those types of things, so we know what, what day our data becomes the set we're looking at, and then have to, have to determine a, a cycle on, is that every two weeks, is it every three weeks, is it every 30 days, what, what that might look like. So I'll need to confer with the board officers and then determine where we are and whether you want to look at a special meeting for that discussion, or how you want to do that.
Okay. And then superintendent comments?
Yeah, just a, a couple this evening. One, we've, we've had a, a couple long meetings, but it's been because of our, our parents, our students, our staff, their passion, their, their support and concern about our community, our, our students and staff. And I, I can tell you, having watched so many other school district boards meetings, that they've had these types of discussions, our folks have done that with, with a lot of class and been able to, as a community, have some really hard discussions and conversations. But, but being able to, to have that in, in the way that we've done it, I, I think is, is exceptional. It, it shows a lot about Olath. And then to acknowledge and, and give a special thank you to our elementary teachers, administrators, and staff, who have really led the way for us as we started this school year, as they started in, in hybrid and worked through that, and, and the hard work and helping provide feedback and information that will be of value to us moving forward. And then to start this week with, with all the students back and, and the concerns that many staff members had in, in doing so, but they've done an incredible job, and I just want to, to thank them for their hard work and, and dedication and commitment, because they, they really are helping lead the way for, for the rest of us. So just a special thank you to them. And that concludes my remarks for this evening.
All right. And then my understanding is no executive session?
Correct.
All right. So the meeting is adjourned.